All right, I'm assuming we're live now?
Looks that way.
Yes, we are.
Okay, well, I will want to call this meeting to order at seven oh four P M. And I will ask, uh, see who we got here. Um, Frank, you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Mayor, I have to do a roll call.
Oh, I am so sorry. I totally skipped over that. Roll call, please, first.
Mayor Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yeah.
Councilmember Emily Hill. Present. Councilmember Weir.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Krupa.
All right.
Jean, I think he's on mute. Okay.
I think he's muted.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, uh, now move now back to you, Frank. My apologies.
No worries. All right. The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I appreciate it, Frank. Uh, and then now moving on to presentation. We have a presentation for the comprehensive plan, uh, by Chance Sparks, project manager with Freeze and Nichols.
All right, thanks for having me. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, so I can get permission to share a screen or we can just roll through it this way too. Either way, um, so I'm Chance Sparks and I'm with Freez and Nichols and, uh, we're really excited to be getting rolling on your comprehensive plan. Uh, the the second slide you see here does have our project team. You're just hearing from me tonight. You'll be hearing from several of these other folks along the way. The the people you'll be seeing the most out of this group, uh, will be me, uh, Lauren Garrett, uh, David Payne and Travis James. But you also see a couple of other people pop in, uh, like Gail and Jessica and a few others, uh, along the way. Go ahead and advance. Uh, so our scope of work is, uh, is fifteen months. Uh, the way we've structured this is, uh, is we asked for the city to coordinate the meetings. This is basically, uh, you just handle sending out the emails to what people know when we're when the advisory committee's meeting, things like that. Um, because you you simply know them better than we do, uh, but also for making logistical arrangements for, you know, if we need to get a space. You know, you have the relationships with places or you own the buildings that we might want to use for a meeting. Uh, so that that's the the basic premise of that. We're not asking for any any major effort. We can draft social media posts, all kinds of things for you. Um, we try to make it where it's more of a cut and paste effort for the staff and, uh, and not a burden. Uh, the, uh, overall project, uh, will will be delivering different elements of the plan, uh, throughout the project, uh, kind of in a more or less, uh, uh, logical order. This plan includes the comprehensive plan, but also includes really robust parks plan and transportation plan components. Uh, those two components in particular, we may actually spin off as separate documents mainly because they get referenced by different groups a lot of times. And sometimes get updated more often than a comprehensive plan. So we try to set that up to be easy to use, uh, going forward. Can you go ahead and advance to the next page? So there's a, uh, we have set up a series of what we call our minimum meetings and events. Typically, what happens at our comprehensive plans is we set minimums for what we're gonna do, and then we always end up exceeding them. Um, so we we expect, you know, you've got six during committee meetings laid out. We will probably have seven or eight. Uh, that wouldn't be a surprise. We might do some extra stakeholder interviews, things like that. And, uh, can you hang on for just a moment? Sorry, I had a had an infant invade my room. Uh, yeah. We also have some community workshops and open houses planned, uh, adoption meetings, uh, and also an interactive website that we're currently working on. Uh, full cost on this is a little over three nine three hundred nineteen thousand. Uh, we deliver electronic files. That's our basic approach, uh, this day and age. Excellent. So we know one of the questions that comes up is what's gonna be the, uh, the various pieces of the comprehensive plan? So we always start off with a introduction and snapshot. This is really just laying out who you are today as people, as a place geographically. What's going on in the community, whether the development pressures, uh, things like that, uh, and also what's going on in the region, uh, that's gonna be important to Manor. So good example, that might be talking about, uh, efforts with, uh, rail infrastructure and how that might affect, uh, and be relevant. Uh, from there, we move into a vision guiding principles and goals, uh, section. So when we talk about a vision statement, that's where we ask you to essentially get in your time machine, go to twenty fifty and say, we want a, you know, a couple of sentences. Describe what Manor is like in twenty fifty. That's setting your destination, uh, for where you want to go. Uh, we have guiding principles as part of this. We call these, uh, the moral compass of your plan. And these are especially useful because they usually cross all topical areas. They also help you deal with the unanticipated that can happen. A good example that we use for this is, uh, is, uh, is, uh, Uber as an example. Uh, if you were writing a comprehensive plan, you know, ten fifteen years ago, the whole idea of a, uh, of a dispersed taxi service, uh, that's all run off of a phone app. Nobody was thinking about that, uh, in that day and age. So you have your guiding principles to help you deal with those things that are unanticipated. And of course, you have goals, uh, the future conditions that you want to get to. And, uh, and then we also do a summary of all the engagement. That ends up in an appendix to the document. We like to provide all of that to you because that's lots of great juicy stuff about how does your community feel about Manor today and in the future. Uh, it can be a really great resource. Uh, from there, we get into the real meat of the plan, the land use growth and, uh, and then we also have a downtown TOD component. So we'll look at your existing land uses. Uh, we put together future land use plans and we bring in metrics with that for, you know, what's your employment goals? What's your population density, things like that. Uh, and we also look at place types. Uh, what are those uses going to be? What are the development styles going to be? Um, and and how are those arranged? Uh, we will be building on this downtown transit oriented development project, uh, aspect, uh, that comes with the rail. Uh, with Cap Metro that's been going on in conversations with Green Line. From there, we move into transportation. This is, uh, more than just thinking about traffic, though. This is really dealing with mobility overall. So it's thinking about traffic related issues, but it's also thinking about, uh, how pedestrians get around. Uh, how do people get around that don't have cars? What about bikes? What about people that are disabled? Um, are there any differences in transportation modes that vary based on population characteristics, you know, despite lower income? Are there racial diva racial, uh, changes between groups, things like that? We want to think about all of those things, uh, so that we build an inclusive, uh, transportation system in Manor, uh, during this time horizon. Uh, next page, please. With whenever we, once we've got the kind of land use framework together, we start thinking about your infrastructure and what are the implications for it? You think about what's the build out look like for Manor and what are those key, uh, infrastructure elements to think about? This is gonna be your water and wastewater systems, of course, but we also think about stormwater. You're fast growing right now. So what are some, uh, efficient thoughtful ways to talk about stormwater, uh, in a way that makes it easy to maintain, gets you really good results? Doesn't result in negative impacts up and downstream, things like that. Also, the Parks Recreation Open Space Component. Uh, this is, uh, one of the more fun aspects of this project. Because it's looking at your system, your park system and what it could be in the future. Uh, parks are always a struggle for fast growing cities, especially cities that were pretty small, um, when they first started experiencing their rapid growth. Um, and this particular component, uh, we structure in a way so that it can qualify you for Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, uh, local funding. Uh, we know, uh, grants are always a a favorite tool of cities because grants mean you're not asking voters to throw money at a problem. That's always gonna be a a more popular choice. Uh, from there, we get into economic resiliency. Uh, and this is really looking at what what is going on with your economy today? What's the direction going? What what's your role in the region? What could that role be in the region in the future? Uh, what are some of the natural fits for you for you from a market perspective? But also, how do you make people part of that equation? What are the types of jobs that would benefit the people that are here now and that we think will be moving there in the future? Uh, we also look at community identity and urban design. This is really taking who you think you are as a city and putting it into a visual representation in the built environment around you. What is what? How do you know when you've arrived in Manor? What are those iconic elements? Um, this is also where we talk about, uh, uh, your neighborhoods and how do you lift up your your existing neighborhoods while at the same time accounting for growth in new areas? Uh, basically, how do you make everybody benefit from what's happening in the city and feel good about what's happening and good about the vision? Uh, so I'll flip to the next page. Uh, and from there, we get to implementation. So implementation is where we lay out how the how does the rubber meet the road on this? How do we get from where we are today to your destination in twenty fifty? Uh, so we'll look at different types of policies, different types of improvements that might be needed. Uh, we even look at things like staffing issues and what what do we think your your staffing impacts are gonna be to different decisions? Uh, we like to prioritize these and also package these. Sometimes you could do projects in isolation, but sometimes if you do them together, they have that much more impact. Um, and then, uh, we also, uh, establish metrics at this point as as well. So that way you know, not just are you doing the things, but are you doing the right things? Is it getting you to the place you want to be? Uh, we also look, uh, and also perform what we call a diagnostic analysis on your codes. So anytime we're talking about a comprehensive plan implementation, it relies heavily on the actions of the private sector. Uh, you know, what's getting built in your community, what's getting redeveloped in your community? So you have to create that regulatory framework, that incentive framework that gets you from where you want to, from where you are today to where you want to be. Uh, again, this is a fifteen month timeline. Uh, we're anticipating our, uh, project kickoff. Uh, if you want to the next page. Um, will be, uh, on May seventh, um, in the afternoon is our game plan for that. And that's really comprised of a, uh, a couple of things. It's an initial meeting where we kind of talk through all the issues, uh, have some conversations with the staff and whoever they feel appropriate to bring in for that conversation. Uh, we want to find out, you know, what are the questions we have about existing plans that I've adopted? What are some of your key priorities that we should know early on? In fact, that's part of why we're here tonight. Uh, and any controversial topics that we even know about, uh, what we always say is we're not gonna avoid the controversial topics. We're not gonna avoid the landmines. We just want to know when we're gonna step on them. So that way we know how to get off of them. The, uh, we also have a tour of the city. Uh, you cannot do a plan from behind a desk. You have to go to the place. You have to, you know, use all five senses to understand what's going on. Uh, we're also anticipating, uh, project website rolling out probably sometime in early to mid May. Uh, we're also looking at our first advisory committee meeting, uh, with using the planning and zoning commission for that. But we're talking with, uh, Scott to see what date is gonna work best. We're planning tentatively for the second Wednesday, uh, in May and try to use second Wednesdays depending on commission workload. Uh, we don't want to overwhelm them with their day to day, uh, but also don't want to take up another evening from them if we don't have to. So it's striking that balance. Uh, and then, uh, uh, really from there, uh, it starts going into plant production. Do you want to flip to the next screen? Uh, we have, uh, done some data collection. Um, Scott has been great gathering up, uh, all kinds of data that we need. I think it ended up being a five hundred and twelve megabyte file, uh, that he sent to us. So it was quite impressive. Uh, but checked off everything we were looking for in terms of G I S data, historical data, things like that. Uh, we've also started thinking about the project branding. Uh, we have since updated this. You want to flip to the next screen? Um, because kind of what we thought about is, you know, Manor has this great rich history and your history is kind of linked up to your future. You're going from, uh, a rural place to an urban place. And all that's changing your services, community expectations, everything that comes with that urbanization process. Um, so we started thinking on on your brand, on your brand is playing off, uh, some of that that's going on. We think about the rail aspect and we start thinking about what's your destination in the future? How do you get people to think about the future? Where do you want to be? Where do you want to go in Manor? Uh, that's actually part of how Manor got here was rail. That's the reason, that's the reason it was built. Um, so we're we're seeing that link, uh, but we also want to find ways to to celebrate the people as well. So we're gonna think about, you know, a destination for all sort of thing with this, uh, with this branding. We've actually updated, uh, the graphics that you see on the right in the bottom right there, uh, to modernize those a little bit more, make them feel a little bit more, uh, future oriented, uh, more so than looking backwards. Uh, but that's, uh, what we're kind of thinking on the brand at this point. Go ahead, the next, uh, page here. And that really brings me to why I'm excited to be here to have a conversation, uh, with y'all as the as the city council tonight. All of you were elected, uh, which means that you represent your community, which means you understand your community presumably. And so we want to understand from you, what are the things that we need to think about, uh, in this process? Uh, we know we're gonna have some other conversations, especially at the kickoff meeting about, you know, reaching underrepresented groups, uh, that have not been as inclined to participate in the past. Um, and find ways to reach them in their way that that they feel comfortable that they want to open up. Uh, but we've really asked a few questions here. What are the types of issues that you hope this plan addresses or accomplishes? What are the best ways to reach people that might not have participated? Uh, odds are when you're campaigning, you met a lot of these folks. What where can we best reach them and what do you think that we need to know as your consultant that would help make this planning effort be successful? Um, so with that, I'm gonna clam up and, uh, and, uh, and see what, uh, questions or, uh, comments you'll have on that.
No, I appreciate the, uh, the the overview and, you know, so council knows this is something that, uh, we we asked, uh, them to be able to do to get some early feedback from council, um, instead of waiting a whole nother month that that to kind of give this presentation to us. You know, let's go ahead and get it started as best as possible and as soon as possible without any delays on our end, right? Um, and so from what you saw, uh, you know, just kind of go around the horn real quick. Is there any feedback, initial immediate feedback that you see that's just like a glaring thing of, hey, uh, would would refer you to relook at this or include this or modify this that that's big and and consider overarching right now, uh, based off this presentation? So, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, no, um, I know that there's gonna be some, uh, viewers that may ask, um, uh, about the library. And so I I think, um, when we're talking about parks and recreation, that kind of thing, I think that's in that section. But, um, uh, but, um, in our initial request, we were, uh, that was one of the things people were looking for is, you know, a solution or recommendations in regards to that. So just want to make sure as we continue to update and present that we don't lose, uh, that community request. Um, uh, in regards to, you know, direct sports, direct senior type stuff, library, so, um, and then, um, I'll pause for there. I might say something.
Okay, uh, immediate pass, Mayor Pro Tim, Deja Hill?
Yes, um, the only thing I wanted to know, I guess, during, um, on the timeline, if there are times where it will come back to council. I know that P and Z is gonna be a really major part about it, but where will we be in that?
Sure. So, um, so the we do have check-ins, uh, included with the city council on the way. The big check-in that's probably the most important is right after we've established, uh, what that bit, what we think that vision state needs to be. Uh, because we want to check back in with you as the council and say, hey, this is what we've been hearing from your committee. This is where we think we're going. These are what we think the guiding principles are. Are we on the right track, uh, with that? Uh, that's a key point because that's gonna inform everything we do afterward. Uh, we'll also be doing some, uh, some check-ins with you at other points along the way. We're gonna provide some content, uh, so that way if Scott wants to do an update in between, he's more than more than happy to. And, uh, and all that, we want you all to feel really good about the process all the way through. We want, you know, when you get pinned down in the coffee shop to be able to give a an elevator explanation of what what's going on with the plan effort.
Um, and I guess my last question was, um, and this may come in with, um, you mentioned us going out with the community and reaching out. Um, how much input do we get to have in terms of the branding of, I guess, that final brand that we want to have for Manor? I like the railing idea, but.
Sure. So the so what we're doing with the branding on this project, we're actually just branding the project, uh, for how we how we generate some excitement there. Uh, I can circulate the logos back around to, uh, through Scott, uh, and they can, uh, sure they'll be able to reach out, uh, whatever your normal ways of reaching out with the city council there, uh, to get some feedback, uh, on those. Um, and, uh, we can, I'll probably send those to Scott probably this evening or first thing in the morning.
Oh, thank you. That's all.
All right, uh, pass Mayor Pro Tim, uh, and Weir.
Uh, yeah, I'm just gonna be interested to see how, uh, perhaps how it looks block by block plan for the future city development. That's, that's what I'd be interested in seeing. Well, and you're talking about being able to talk about the growth. I mean, how I'm curious how you're gonna incorporate all of that.
Sure. So, uh, so we of course look at the future land use. But you you said, uh, you're kind of what is what's your, uh, question about how do we incorporate all the?
I'm just, I'm gonna be curious. It's not necessarily a question. I'm just a statement. I'm just gonna be curious to how you you do that. And it will it be a block by block approach or how will you?
Sure. So so we 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 will look at, you know, both globally, what's going on with development projects, uh, as a whole. But we'll, we will be looking on a pretty fine grain of, uh, what's going on, you know, citywide, but especially in the downtown area. That's where you really see the more block by block emphasis because that's where we have to start thinking about, uh, all those complicated issues of preservation. Uh, are you, if you're starting to experience, uh, the first inklings of displacement type issues, things like that, uh, that'll be with that really fine grain level as well.
Very good.
All right, um, Councilman Jean Krupa.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two, uh, questions. One, it dealing with the rail service, since Austin has not proved that the rail service is effective and cost effective, how are we gonna prevent us actually going into the bucket and with this rail service plan?
All right. So how do you make sure that that makes fiscal sense for Manor? That's what that's like. Okay.
All right. All right, is that it for, uh, from Eugene?
No, the other one is, uh, you were talking about infrastructure. You've never addressed the state and county owned roads and how that that's gonna be addressed to meet the needs of the community as it grows.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we'll include that in the transportation element, uh, looking at, uh, your thoroughfare plan, uh, looking at what the regional groups are up to. The M B O, of course, but also looking at county facilities, state facilities, and how can we get everybody on the same page, uh, with what Manors needs are gonna be in the future? Yeah.
And how about any grants that would be a, uh, of, uh, assistance to the city mayor to not only get the internal roads within the city limits, but the external roads, uh, to be able to accommodate the growing, uh, traffic flow that we have?
Sure, sure. And we actually, uh, that's one of the things we really enjoy in that transportation element is looking for how you connect with funding. And how do you position projects, uh, to be well qualified, uh, for a variety of types of grants? Uh, David Payne, that you heard me reference, uh, uh, has actually done a lot of work for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, that is the kind of the filtering mechanism for most tech stop related funding and things like that. And, uh, well, that's one of the things we'll we'll think about a lot, especially with smaller towns where you don't have a giant pile of money laying around. Uh, we want to position you well for those types of grants.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your information and, uh, I look forward to working with you more in the future.
Excellent.
Councilwoman Emily Hill?
Nothing immediate for me, Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Sonia Wallace?
Um, yes, I want to make sure that we have it included that we want Manor to be a place where people work here, live here and play here. We want the city to be all inclusive for its residents to where where we're talking about the traffic and we're talking about transportation where some of that might be lightened if they don't have to go so far. And also, like Dr. Harvey said, we need to make sure that our youth are included in the things that we create here in Manor while preserving the history and not pushing anyone else out.
All right. So the idea that people, if people are going to Austin, they're doing so by choice, not because they have to.
Right.
And everything you need there and then making sure the youth are part of the conversation. How do you make them want to stick around or come back?
Right. And also the cost of living that jobs that are offered here are, people are able to actually live here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So, you know, and and my final remarks is just going back to the brand thinking, uh, you know, great job in highlighting a lot of stuff that we talked about previously. But, uh, we would love to see some brands, uh, you already have some with the track, some without the track, uh, some with the tower, some without the tower, you know, some some variation. Uh, Manor has its histories and so we're gonna have to look at different angles, uh, just just based upon the history that that Manor does have for all the 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 old residents, new residents and so forth, right? Uh, we gotta take into account for everybody that that's in the population. So if you can give us some variations, I know where you're where you're trying to come from as far as, uh, the city was built based upon how the railroad track connected. Uh, but there are some populations in in the city that does have some heartburn, uh, with some aspects of the current logo. So we'd like to be able to give at the at least different variations. So when you go to the community, they could help also be someone that 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 gives their own perspective on what draws their attention. Um, so if you can just take that second note on that.
Well, really great.
All right, uh, any any comments from, um, the city hall team?
No, I'm just anxious to get started.
I think we all are.
Yeah.
Uh, long, long overdue. So.
Yeah, well, years ago, we we talked about this and finally.
Got it. All right. Well, I appreciate you all. Appreciate the presentation. Uh, if there's nothing else that you wanna, um, you wanna, uh, relay chance, um, that that that'll be it for the presentation portion. We're gonna move on with the agenda.
Absolutely. Great. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. All right, moving on to events and announcements, uh, Community Shred Day and Elec- Electronic Recycling for Saturday, April twenty fourth. Uh, I'm not sure who's making a statement on this one.
That would be U V I.
All right, go ahead, U V I.
Yes, uh, Mayor Council. Um, so we're having our event on Saturday, um, from nine to one. This will be our second, um, event. Last year it was canceled. Um, so we're just inviting everyone to attend. This is only open to Manor residents at this time. Um, uh, the the, as you can see, the flyer has what to bring, you know, information on what to bring, what not to bring, what's acceptable. And we also are accepting donations, um, for the Travis County, the Manor Community Center Food Pantry and then, um, also pet food for the Manor P D Animal Control.
You got it. I appreciate it. Uh, anybody from council have any questions, uh, on this announcement? You got it. I appreciate it. Anybody from council have any questions on this announcement?
No, none here.
All right. Moving on to proclamations, we have two proclamations for this month. One is for Earth Day. And the other is for National Physical Fitness and Sports Month. So the first proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the first Earth Day was proclaimed in 1970 in order to educate people on responsible environmental stewardship, protect the environment and conserve resources. And whereas the global theme for Earth Day 2021 is restore our earth, which focuses on natural processes, emerging green technologies and innovative thinking that can restore the world's ecosystem. And whereas this annual celebration is a reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments and sustainability efforts for current and future generations. And whereas everyone must step forward and take action to create a positive environmental change to combat the global challenges. And whereas the city celebrates and supports Earth Day by implementing a variety of activities to engage our community's awareness and participation to restore our planet. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 as Earth Day. And the City of Manor, Texas, and invite and encourage our community and businesses to use this day to celebrate the earth. And to commit to creating a cleaner and healthier environment for a better quality of life for current and future generations by planting trees, gardening, picking up litter, recycling and conserving energy and water. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to seal the City of Manor to be affixed this 21st day of April, 2021. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor, City of Manor. And if we were in, if we were meeting physically, I would give this to Councilwoman Deja Hill as she is the one that submitted for the proclamation to, to be presented. And this goes directly in alignment with the city and, and council doing the resolution to join climate mayors. And we also have a, on the agenda C40, which we'll be hearing from later on. Next proclamation reads as follows. Whereas since 1956, the President's Council on Sports, Fitness and Nutrition has played an important role in educating Americans about the benefits of physical activity and healthy eating. And whereas the council consists of athletes, physicians, fitness professionals and entrepreneurs who are appointed by the president and serve in an advisory capacity through the Secretary of Health and Human Services. And whereas through partnerships with the public, private and nonprofit sectors, the council promotes programs and initiatives that motivate people of all ages, backgrounds and ability to lead active, healthy lives. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2021 as National Fitness, National Physical Fitness and Sports Month in the City of Manor, Texas, and encourage all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to learn the benefits of physical activity and healthy eating to improve our quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to seal the City of Manor to be affixed this 21st day of April 21st, 2021. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., Mayor, City of Mayor. And this proclamation would be handed to Councilwoman and Weir, who oversees our healthcare task force efforts. And with that, moving on to public announcements, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, we have a couple of people who have signed up to speak for both public comments, but also for item number, I think 14. I'm wanting to know whether they'd prefer to speak with the agenda item or under citizens communication realizing council can't respond. We have John Forsythe, Bill Forsythe and Stacia Forsythe.
Hi Tom, it's, it's Bill Forsythe. We're flexible, whatever the council and the mayor prefer.
I, I would say let's go ahead and, and have y'all speak on agenda item 14. So that way it permits some, some, some dialogue. And then what I'll do unless I have any legality objections from City Hall is after, I'll be bumping up agenda item 16 after the consent agenda and then go to 14. Any, any legality objections to that? Tom?
No, you can move around as you, as you want.
Okay. So that way y'all don't have to sit here through, through everything else.
I'm, I'm sure it's appreciated.
No problem. Okay. So now let's go down to reports. On the reports, we have listed the Manor Disaster Group. This was something that wanted to bring up in, in a sense of we're talking about even now the vaccination efforts and funding and, you know, how can the city be able to help and support the local efforts that are going on in, in, in the ones that are happening on behalf of the city? And something that we need to ensure as a city and just as a safety precaution, as any business does, basically informing council and want council to know that I'll be, I'll be working with Mayor Pro Tim, Chris Harvey, who knows all the FEMA stuff in and out, and be asking our city manager and Lydia, who also manages all the funding, financial aspects. What, what do we need to do to have organizations like the Manor Disaster Group and the others, the Manor Health and Wellness Alliance? And, and all the others that are within the Manor area? What paperwork do they need to file and submit to us so we can have it on file? So as we're soliciting as, as councils, advocacy for the city and referring individuals that are asking us how to support the community, we have documentation on file if asked or if needed to be able to ensure that someone that's donating, donating their money is, is donating to an organization that we have properly done the, the, the full vetting on. So that way the city's protected, that organization is protected and whoever's donating the money is just double reassured. So this is something kind of a phase two sort of, the, the, of sorts. A kind of a phase two of sorts, you know, we just need to go back and just do the quality control and make sure that we have everything good to go. Anything that you want to add on that, Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, you had most of my, right on the head. You know, we want to be sure that, you know, when we was going through the FEMA training, looking at those, those pieces, we want to be sure that one, we have organizations, a, an inventory, if you will, a director of organization and people with resources. So when natural disasters happen, we can just go to that inventory and see who we need to call because they have these resources or they're trying to do this or they're trying to do that. They have the necessary insurances for liability purposes and correct paperwork for 501(c) designations. So for donations and so as we start working through these pieces though, you know, it's a big thing we noticed during COVID and, and the winter storm was that when people came ready to donate, there were certain things, questions we couldn't ask about certain organizations. And so we want to be sure that in the future we're educating our community partners on how they can better be, better prepared. So when things happen, we can activate people quicker and, and even help connect them with funding to support their missions and needing those requirements for that. So I think the more proactive we can be, the better off we'll be later on. You never prepare for a disaster, but you can be, some of these things we can try to plan for ahead of time.
So. It, yeah, definitely. And the other aspect is we are also still going through our revision of our own emergency management basic plan. So this is a, a appendix or a subsection to that. So this is stuff that's going to be asked anyways as part of, as part of the plan. And then the county is also now getting ready to start doing a, a review of its plan as well. So, you know, we're just trying to make sure we get ahead of the ball game. And then even as we're looking at more holistic stuff, we're talking about now we have the education committee. It's more youth focused and, and, and informing the community about things. And we create all these other different types of committees. So we, we're going to start really hopefully looking more at other types of granting and programs and services. So that already have organizations that are thoroughly vetted. It makes it easier to do these joint grant submissions and so forth. Chief, anything you want to add as, at least regarding the need for us to review? And make sure any nonprofits that we're working with are thoroughly vetted and have their paperwork submitted to us and on file for the emergency management plan that you're in charge of?
Not off the top of my head. I think that's definitely something that we need to sit down and figure out what that vetting process is going to be. Especially if we're going to be recommending, you know, public dollars or grant dollars to go to entities not directly, you know, overseen by the city. So, but nothing right off the top of my head, but definitely something we need to look at.
Yeah.
If I could interject, this is Leah Collins, Director of Finance. There's a lot of details that I, I really don't want to get into in a public forum that regarding the, the vetting of organizations because that is something that's done yearly for organizations to maintain. And that's a, that's a huge administrative burden to ensure any organization that, to ensure that they are
Still viable.
Still viable, you know, that, that they're, and that, that they're still maintaining their 501(c)(3) status. Administratively, that I, I know for me and my, for me, because it's just me, that's not something that I'd be able to, to take on and handle by myself.
No, got it. Understandable.
So I think that, I think more offline discussion is probably needed.
Got it. And as we talked about going forward and taking care of the city and so forth, we still need to put things in place. Even if it's, if the organization doesn't provide the stuff in a packet or the checklist that needs to happen and they come off of our list, right? How do we simplify the process so it's not too much of a burden on employee staff while at the same time we're, we're creating additional avenues of being able to provide the wellbeing and holistic aspects within the city more than this, the traditional municipal services. Tom, anything you want to add?
I see this as a resource for what organizations might be helpful given a certain circumstance.
Right.
But it is not us applying for grants on their behalf.
Exactly. I, I think it's exactly what you're talking about. The same thing that we kind of did with the, the Urban League and what we're probably going to be talking about with this next grant, the, the grant that's on the, the agenda for today. Yeah, we, you know, we all know that we have our own restrictions and bandwidth capabilities, but we have to find ways to work through those or else we're still going to continue to be in the same predicament that we have been in previous years. So, all right. Any other comments on this report from council? If not, then we will move to public hearing, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing on the ordinance rezoning 2.13 acres, more or less, Lot 4, Blue Bonnet Business Park, Section 1, and being located at 15721 US Highway 290 East from agricultural A to heavy commercial C3. Scott?
Evening, Mayor and Council. So this is, is the public hearing for this rezoning request. It went to the planning commission last week and they are recommending, once, when you get to the action item, C2 medium commercial, which is also staff's recommendation. This, this particular property was annexed in 2017 and the default zoning after annexation is agricultural, which is why it has that designation right now. It does front on 290 and so consisted with most of the other commercial on 290. We were recommending C2 medium commercial. And I believe the, the applicant is here. If they wanted to add anything to that or I can answer any of your questions.
Keeper of landing, land planning, do you have anything you want to add? All right, council, do you have any questions?
None for me.
All right. There have been no questions going on.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So the existing structure is going to be there, is going to remain there, but then it's going to be another larger structure that'll go behind it?
That's the preliminary plan right now. So they haven't submitted a site plan or anything. So there's nothing, you know, definitive. There's, there's actually not like, you know, permit document. But their plans are now to use, yeah, the existing structure with maybe some potential minor renovations as the office area for the business. And then a, a larger structure behind where their kind of materials for their business would be stored. It's supposed to be their, the business is called The Glass House. And so it's, they, they install windows and other glass items. And so those materials would be in the, you know, the storage area within it. But again, they, anything with allowed under C2 would be permitted. So if this, you know, gets zoned and then that business goes away, which has happened, you know, any other types of C2 use would be allowed. But yes, they are planning to do a larger structure behind that existing, what was a home.
Okay. And I guess my question was the, the designation to, to jump to a C2 status, if it was more of a, a storage type of use and, and I guess with the vicinity of other things that are around it, did anyone else, neighbors and things like that have any issues with it?
Sure. So the use, I mean, it would be like a contractor shop is kind of what it kind of falls into in our code. And yes, you are, I'm glad you brought that up. The, the Neighborhood Association, which the president of Mr. Amos, he, he's provided a letter in support of the C2 and in opposition to the C3. But also an adjacent property owner, Mr. Mercer, opposed any commercial designation. But staff was still recommending the C2 and that's what the planning commission also recommended.
Thanks. The actual recommendation, let me understand, is C2, not C3?
Yes, that was staff's recommendation and that is what the planning commission approved 4.0 was C2 medium commercial.
Okay.
And council member, we're, we're going to get to the actual rezoning of this property later. And I think that's where you'd see it designated as C2, the recommendation.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Uh, any other comments? All right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I make a motion to be closed the public hearing on the rezoning.
All right.
My second.
Been properly motioned and who seconded it? Was that you, Deja?
Emily Hill.
Emily, okay. And seconded by Councilwoman Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? Questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Kupa.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passed. And moving on to the consent agenda, all the following items on the agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless requested by myself or a fellow council member. In which event, the items will be. In which event, the items will be removed from the agenda and considered separately. So we have on a consent agenda, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the city council minutes. Of April seven, twenty twenty one, city council regular meeting in April nine, twenty twenty one. Uh city council calls special meeting. And then we have count uh consideration, discussion, and possible action on acceptance of the March twenty twenty one departmental report. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion um to approve the city council minutes from April seventh and April ninth. And um the acceptance of the March twenty twenty one departmental reports.
It has been so motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And probably seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Now, moving on to what was formerly Agenda Item number sixteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to adopt the resolution authorizing the City of Manor to sign on to the city. Race to Zero. Uh I've asked um that the C forty uh uh represent. And and give us some information on this, so I don't jack it up, and I'm glad that Mr. Josh Alpert was able to be on. Uh and Josh, I hand the mic over to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh and good evening, uh council members. My name's Josh Alpert. And I'm Director of Special Projects at C forty Cities. C forty is an international NGO based in London. And we work with the mayors of ninety seven of the world's leading cities on climate action. And tonight I was gonna talk very briefly about Race to Zero. As you may know, this year, it was supposed to be last year, but this year uh in November is COP twenty six. Where all the nations in the world come together to uh discuss their plans for fighting climate change. And this particular COP is truly the most important climate event of the past decade. Because this is the opportunity for nations to come together and report on the progress that's been made since the Paris Agreement was signed in twenty sixteen. Because of that, uh C forty and our partner organizations have been working with the UN to impress upon them. That nations are not going to meet their nationally determined commitments if cities aren't gonna meet their uh climate goals. And for the first time in our history, uh cities finally have a more formalized role in the UN process. That has led uh the COP high-level champions at the UN to establish what's called Race to Zero. And Race to Zero is a campaign uh that involves several different streams. One around businesses, one around finance institutions, one around regions, uh one around universities. And then one around cities, and the idea behind this uh for each of the different streams is to. Create coalitions of strength and the willing to go to Glasgow, Scotland in November. Virtually or physically uh and show support for uh ambitious climate action. In joining uh cities' Race to Zero, which C forty is leading recruitment on. And there are five criteria for cities to sign on to. Each of these criteria are consistent with. Uh Maynard signing on, signing a resolution, uh adopting the Paris Agreement, uh I think back in twenty sixteen. Those criteria include uh signing on to a pledge that climate uh change is. A uh an immediate and necessary action that uh must be taken, uh that there is a climate emergency. Uh it includes um pledging to reach net zero by mid-century, by twenty fifty. Uh as well as by adopting a twenty thirty target that represents as close as possible to a fifty percent. Uh fair share goal of uh of emissions. Then, and probably most importantly, it requires that each city take at least one climate action over the next several years. And on the portal for registration, there's a whole menu of um. Uh I think over fifty different climate actions and then space to add in climate actions as well. Uh and then finally, there's a reporting component to the uh to the challenge as well. Uh and cities who have never reported will have until the end of twenty twenty two to report emissions. And will get lots of uh education and coaching, uh technical assistance on how that all works. But the most important part of all of this, and what I really wanted to say is. Race to Zero, of course, uh includes targets and numbers and emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. But really what it's about is inspiration uh and action. And the whole idea of it and the whole idea really behind organizations like mine, C forty, and other network organizations is to inspire each other. Uh by telling stories of how climate actions that cities are taking on the ground affect people in their everyday lives. There are quite a few benefits of uh Maynard joining uh cities' Race to Zero. One, of course, you would be put into uh a uh coalition of right now over seven hundred and six cities around the world. Who have joined uh and our internal goal really is to get well, well above a thousand and hopefully closer to three thousand cities by November. Uh signing on, and then this campaign will live on in subsequent years as well. Uh so one, of course, is just joining uh with your sister cities all over the world and showing strength. That cities can actually get this done. Uh two, it's learning and sharing with those cities, and C forty facilitates networks on every facet of climate change. From transportation uh to electricity, everything in between, uh including job creation. And moving away from high-energy jobs to lower-energy jobs and all of those things. And uh depending on actions that are taken by cities, C forty is moving beyond our ninety seven cities. To provide technical assistance to all cities who are taking actions. Uh there will also be technical assistance provided by by our partners on uh the reporting process, as I mentioned. Uh as well as on setting targets, and there are three different methodologies that have been approved by the UN. Uh in either creating a climate action plan or updating your climate action plan, and we're happy to provide that technical assistance. Uh joining also includes um getting invitations to the variety of different events that have already started in the run-up. To COP twenty six in November, um webinars, uh I know the mayor was on a webinar last week. Which is fantastic, they're happening now, Fast and Furious, and they're on every imaginable conversation around climate. Uh from financing to um uh equity and the uh absolute need to build inclusive climate actions. Not just climate actions, uh speaking opportunities as well. Um and for me, probably the most exciting part of all of this is the ability for us to highlight and tell Maynard's story to the rest of the world. And so we've created on our registration portal, the ability to upload documents, videos, uh stories. All of those things that will then uh be able to share through social media and videos and other things that our communications team is working on. So that so that Maynard can also serve as an inspiration to cities as much as you're being inspired by other cities. I'll stop there, that's a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate uh your your comment, yeah, I I wouldn't did this no justice, I'd be trying to remember exactly what it was. Um but uh this is something that uh the invite was sent over by Mayor Adler uh from Austin. Uh to to ask to take a look into it, uh they recently signed on uh the website. I think I I think I sent that and forwarded that out, so everybody can kind of get idea of all the different cities that were involved. And just uh how kind of this highlights what we're doing, what are some of the efforts, uh where are some of the areas that need and so forth. Um but I I'll open up uh to any questions um that anybody may have on council.
I just have a a comment, I like the idea of of repurposing uh the fight. Uh restratitizing and taking it to uh to the cities. You know, where we're making those local decisions and 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 working directly with our residents. A lot more, and so um and you know, everything we're about here right now and everything we're trying to do right now is to. Build a better city and, you know, taking consideration of our residents have told us over the last ten to fifteen years, so. I'm excited about, you know, not only ensuring that we're building great things, but that we can be able to live long enough to to enjoy it. So uh my grandkids, you know, can still be here and have good air and good water, so.
And 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 if I just may respond quickly, uh Mayor Pro Tim, it wasn't lost on me either, uh your agenda today. And how really resolutions like this apply to everything that's happening in cities um and in in manner as well. Uh kicking off your comp plan uh process, climate is part and parcel of every comp plan now, moving forward. As you're uh building out transportation and mobility options, building options, things like that. Uh and of course, related to the work you're doing on your disaster uh preparedness as well. Um and you know, it's our job at C forty and our partner organizations to keep uh the iron to the fire. To make sure that as those processes are going, the climate is front and center in those as well.
Any other remarks from council? All right, there being none, do I have any uh comments from uh from City Hall?
None from me and Mayor.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we accept the uh C forty invite from uh Mayor Seattle and approve the resolution. Number twenty twenty one dash ten to join the cities' Race to Zero.
It's been so motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh.
That one's tough.
You know what, I'm gonna give it to Councilwoman Wallace, just because she's been trying so hard the last couple of meetings, so let's give her some wins on her belt. All right, uh any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill. Yes. Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. You you did a good job there, Josh, I appreciate it. Uh we look forward to working with you. And uh uh shoot shoot me and 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 the team a email on what what specifics we need to do to get it started. And uh I know one of the big things is doing our own analysis of where we're at currently. Uh that that initial kind of a climate, whatever you call it, study or something. Uh so loo- looking forward to making sure we're getting on the right foot. As I tell any other organization, we're going at two point five percent year over year. Uh we're one of the fastest-growing suburbs, and we want to stay proactive and ahead of a lot of the issues. That the other cities are now trying to uh compensate for, you know, we want to stay ahead of the game.
Great, we'll be there every step of the way with you.
Appreciate it, thanks, you have a good evening.
You as well.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item number fourteen, consideration, discussion, and possible action on awarding a construction contract. For the twenty two, twenty twenty Capital Metro Paving Improvements Project. Um Tom, is that you or is that?
Well, I I thought Frank, because um uh he has the information and prepared the the agenda item for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I can follow up if I need to.
Okay, I I can take it. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um this item before you tonight is the. Um uh recommended award of a construction contract for the twenty twenty Capital Metro Paving Improvements Project. This is um really the annual paving project that he does now in concert with um uh the Capital Metro funding. Uh we opened bids on March sixteenth uh for the project. Um this particular project includes um several uh streets in in um downtown Maynard. Um and the base bid was Burnett from Towns to Murray, as well as Rectoron Towns from Burnett to Lexington. And then we had alternates for Lane, Towns, and Browning from Bastrop to Lexington Street. We um opened the bids and there were six responsive bidders for the project. Forsyth Brothers was uh the low bidder. Um following bid opening, what we do is we go through and do a um thorough evaluation of bidder qualifications. That includes um bank reference information, bonding agency information, uh credit references from material suppliers. That are applicable to the type of work, and then also uh project references for projects that are typical for the type of work. Um that's being considered done, um where we, you know, interview um project managers for other projects. So we conducted our evaluation on Forsyth Brothers Infrastructure and um noted that uh there weren't any projects. That were submitted um that were paving projects, primarily paving projects. Um since this is um almost exclusively a a paving rehabilitation project. Um and uh so we didn't have any of project references um that we spoke with that could attest to that background and experience. Um in addition, uh we also conducted the financial reviews and looked at um credit references. There weren't any credit references provided. Um apparently, there's a um Forsyth Brothers operates on a cash basis. Um so there weren't any credit references available. Um and then we also uh reviewed bonding capacity. And found that they were running at about ten percent of their bonding capacity, so there wasn't a lot of um uh work that was being done under bonded capacity. Um at the time. Also, we um talked to uh a bank, the bank reference that was provided. And got some information on account balances and saw that that had dropped so much. So uh in taking this information to city staff, uh discussions with city staff. They requested that we'd conduct the same evaluations for um Smith Contracting. Who was uh the second low on the project. Um and um we did the exact same bidder's qualifications reviews um for them as well. Um and and found uh, you know, they provided references that were um paving projects. Um we also had experience with them and doing previous paving projects in the city. Um spoke with their um credit references, and um they provided credit references for appropriate material suppliers. Spoke with their bonding agent about um where they were in their capacities and so forth. And they also um did not have much in the way of bonding capacity um projects going on right now. Um and then uh they provided uh references on a number of accounts. Um that um current balances were typical um to what their account balances usually are. And so as a result of the evaluations and conversations with city staff. Um we're making a recommendation for award of the contract to um Smith. Um in the amount of three hundred and ninety two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. And I'll go ahead and um open it up to any questions that you all have.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you for calling that. Um I was saying, uh I'll go ahead and I know we have individuals slated to talk on this. So I'll give each individual uh two minutes, so that way everybody can 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 say at least the the main points of uh. Why they submitted to be able to talk on this on this item, and then we can be able to have council uh ask any additional questions. Tom and your team to be able to provide any additional insight as well. Um so uh I'm not sure who all we have, uh Yuvya or 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 Tom, do you want to um uh call out the individuals?
Uh we had uh my understanding is Bill Forsyth and Stacia Forsyth signed up to speak. I'm not sure John signed up to speak, but that's not a big deal if he wants to.
It's, we have all three, we have all three that signed up, I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right.
Station, station's not signed up to speak, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, uh Mr. Forsyth, uh Bill, do you want to go first?
Yes, sir, and I'm gonna start.
Yes, sir, and I'm gonna start my stopwatch right about now for two minutes. Uh I'm Bill Forsyth, John's my brother, and I'll speak promptly to stay within the two-minute window. Uh we're partners Forsyth Brothers Infrastructure since oh five. We're resident or grew up in Manor. I'm still a resident of Manor. And as you're aware from what Frank said, uh we were the apparent low bidder on the contract in question. Uh circling back, thank you guys for letting us talk to you tonight. Apparently, you guys stay up pretty late. And I also want to note that we have a good working relationship in city. Admiration for them. Um I I did write a letter to Ms. Paul Gray, the engineer uh on the job outlining some points related to the letter recommendation for Smith. Uh and I'm gonna go in reverse order if it's okay. Uh on those points, talked about bonding levels being at a little uh over ten percent of capacity. That's actually a good thing, uh because uh that's essentially like saying you have a credit limit and you're not using it all. Uh someone who's operating in a high percentage of their bonding capacity uh is exposed to market changes and might not be uh as receptive or or accessible on a job and might not have the equipment resources. Uh I'm at a minute twenty-six, sorry. Uh bank references, uh bank account accounts, yes, they did dip. That's because we don't have advanced work, so we don't need to have those funds in our company account. No other accounts were requested, so we moved those funds to other accounts that would earn us money. Uh we typically finance jobs uh through our own pockets. That's just sort of our modus operandi. Uh we didn't submit credit resources because we typically try to pay for things upfront. And uh and that's just our our model. And and with that said, I used up my two minutes and uh didn't get to the other items. Thanks a bunch.
All right, um who else uh do we have? The other, the other four?
I'm John Forsyth.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Uh thank you so much uh for your time. I really appreciate the opportunity. Uh just to to add to what Bill said, uh we we definitely have the financial capability. Um as I mentioned in in my letter to to add on to Bill's, uh we have multiple accounts. Um happy to share those balances with you. Um this is a paving project, but it is uh a a street reconstruction project, um extensive base work. I apologize, that's our attack dog. And so we have a lot of experience with base reconstruction. And as Bill mentioned, uh we sub out paving to Lone Star. They're very, very big paving contractor, uh more than capable of handling the final portion of the project, which is the the paving. Asked, um I'd like to add something that that kind of uh piggybacks on what Josh mentioned. You know, we're a local contractor. Um a lot of our crews is local to the area. Um so base supply will be coming from the the plants on Old Highway twenty. So there's a component there that, uh you know, may not be talked about a lot. Um you know, we're not gonna have to travel as far to get to this job. Um our crew won't have to travel. Material won't have to travel that far. Really, a lot of what I wanted to say, and and this is just about articulating our self-worth, our company's worth, it's not bashing the other company. Um and and certainly not bashing J Engineering. Just, I think there was some miscommunication or some perhaps some things that maybe we should have shared or maybe they could have asked for. Um you know, I I think we're we're more than capable of doing the work. Um obviously, very focused on the project and plans because we we found some things that um you need to be looked at um and and were aware of that perhaps maybe the other contractor wasn't. Again, a a lot of what I wanted to say was 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 listed in that letter and and, you know, respectfully. Uh any questions? Please ask.
Oh, good. I appreciate it. Um any any questions from council?
I'm going, uh well, let me solve a saying, uh I appreciate the fact that you all are are local, local, local business and and are 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 here to advocate for yourself. Um I appreciate that. And um I'll I'll stop there. But I do, I very much appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments or questions from council?
My question, and it was probably just for clarification, was that um you said that you subcontract out to Lone Star in order to do your paving projects, but it was something else that you do instead of paving projects. I want to say it started with a be bonding or?
How about John? How about I'll handle that one?
Go for it.
Uh Councilwoman, yes. So it this project essentially comprises uh three phases and and please cut me off if I'm exceeding a time limit on my response. Essentially, there's the subbase work that's needed, the base preparation that's needed, and then the paving portion of it. Uh the hot ma- hot mix asphaltic concrete pavement, which we would call asphalt or blacktop. And as part of this project, our strategy is to handle the subbase and the base preparation with our forces. And then Lone Star paving would handle that final two or three inches of blacktop, if you will, or 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 uh or hot mix on that, because that's what they do every day, all day. And then uh our our troops would handle the installation of cross-drained structures and safety and treatments as part of our scope of work. It this, this is a quote bonded job, which is essentially uh i- i- I don't know how familiar you are with bonding, but bonding is essentially uh a an entity that stands up and says that our company has the financial and the experienced resources to handle a particular po- project. And in the event that we default, uh they guarantee that they will come after us to seek funds uh to make sure your project, i.e. the taxpayers' project is completed. So that's a, that's always a nasty thing and 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 Frank probably cringes as I say that because nobody wants to go through that. Uh but but almost all the work that we do is bonded work. You've just found us at a a place and time right now to where we're completing a project, which incidentally, we funded. Uh and so now our bonding capacity, we we've used up zero percent of our bonding capacity because we're going out seeking seeking more bonded work.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Any uh additional comments from um City Hall or Frank? Based on uh the information provided by these gentlemen?
Mayor, this was a really difficult decision to make, and I'm not gonna shy away from my part in it. When we looked at what was required for submittal and what we saw from the different contractors, we made that decision with Frank to to look at the second uh contractor to see whether or not they had, in fact, provided the documentation that is part of our bid package. And so I'm part of the city staff that that made that decision. I think Mike might have been involved as well. And again, it was extremely tough because we know Bill, we know John, we know Stacia, uh and they are Manor folks. So I just want to be upfront about that.
The the only thing I would clarify um with regard to bonding capacity is is, you know, it can be viewed as a kind of an insurance policy, if you will. Um you know, for for the work on the job. And when we look at bonding capacity, we are not looking at it with an expectation of somebody being a hundred percent. In fact, that's that's concerning. Uh it's it's usually it's best to see if somebody's in the middle of their bonding capacity or in the the lower third to middle, um because that way they have got work and so forth and so on. Um that that, you know, they've got ongoing things that are keeping their crews busy and and so forth, but they're not slammed. And so it's a midpoint generally, but that it's just one factor and and certainly um um, you know, only one, one of the pieces that's considered. So I just wanted to clarify that um there there isn't an expectation that somebody would have a hundred percent bonding or or that that would be good even.
Please, any any more questions? Don't hesitate to ask.
Right. Um so so I'm understanding, so based off of the checklist, so everything was provided by both sides off of off of the checklist is 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 that what I'm hearing? Or there were some things that were asked for that um that they didn't necessarily need to submit, so there might have been some misunderstanding on some of the things that weren't submitted, I guess is my question.
So there was a specific list of things that were requested um to demonstrate um one experience um doing the paving work, um you know, in past projects and so forth. And you know, the reference, the good references on those past paving projects and those sorts of things. Um and and then that was probably the primary piece. And um the the references that we received from from Forsyth didn't have a a paving experience in it. We're familiar with with Forsyth Brothers. We've worked with them successfully on other projects. Um I didn't know them as a paving contractor. Um and um they didn't provide information demonstrating past, you know, paving projects. Um so that was that was the primary basis. Um there were also the fact that there there weren't credit references. Um and this was more maybe of a concern. Um just low work, no credit references, um dropping bank balances. And and so the aggregate of those things in the current climate was just a concern um uh because it's it's been rough for folks. And we want to make sure that, uh you know, for providing a recommendation that indicators are positive with regard to financial health, so that the contractor can perform the project. That being said, they would have bonds um in place to to cover that. But again, you don't want to go there. Um the city had an experience where a contractor walked off the project on a subdivision in town. Same contractor walked off a utility project um that we were working on in another city. And it delayed the project by months and months and months. And it was just really, really a challenge for everybody involved because the bonding agency um didn't didn't uh didn't follow through in a timely manner.
It was very, very difficult to collect.
Yeah, so.
If I may, if I may elaborate on that, uh you know, we do have credit references uh from the chemical side of the business. We we pay for uh base and concrete as needed. Uh so we we have credit cards uh that we can use. You know, we're just like everybody else. We have credit. We just typically pay for things as they're due um to get better pricing, uh one reason. And uh two, it's 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 simpler. We have, you know, a a lot of cash available to complete this job. I'm not really sure why the bank released only one account. You know, we're very private people, but we would be happy to share the other account balances with you guys. Uh we have three hundred plus thousand dollars of receivables and we don't owe any more money on on projects. So I I don't really know how to alleviate that any further. I I'd be happy to to share that. It's not something that I'd like to do on Facebook Live, but we've got the money, so.
Right. Okay, um. Any additional questions from council?
Um how many, how many Manor residents would you say that you would be able to employ?
Excellent question.
How about I'll tackle that one, John. Uh Councilwoman, uh we currently have one, two, three, approximately five guys that live within uh I guess a five-mile radius from here. A couple guys live north past the high school. And then a couple guys lives south on Blake Manor. So if you allow me uh that that's still Manor Manor address uh before Union Lee Church Road. Uh and then obviously, we're local and and we're we're part of the crew, if you will. Uh so what it, what does that add up to a half dozen or or six or seven? Uh with that stated, we have have a three-quarter million dollar project coming up with Travis County for a bridge reconstruction. So if by chance these two projects were concurrent, we would have to add uh a couple more guys. Uh a a couple, couple young men wanted a summer job, and so we we've offered that up. They are not Manor residents. One's Flitterville. Uh but but so to answer your question, to circle back, probably a half dozen guys, and that's about the typical size of our team.
Okay, what would you feel about offering an apprenticeship to maybe some of our um nineteen, twenty-year-olds that are running around here looking for a job?
I think that's a wonderful idea, and I'm glad you said that because in the past, we have had local folks usually usually found them through uh, you know, the church uh that we go to. And uh we grew up in the trades, product of Manor High School. You know, back then, they called it the Ag Department, but I'm a I'm a super proponent of the vocational part of the education system. You know, there's there's the scholastic part, the book part, but the vocational part, I think, is equally important. And we learned from family. We learned a lot in high school. And uh I think it's an excellent opportunity uh as we've done in the past, for people to get real-world experience, learning about survey. You learn about engineering. You you pick up a shovel, but you also get a chance to operate a piece of machinery. You know, those are, those are things that start to make some of the things you learn in the classroom really come alive when you start talking about a road is shaped like this, actually, and it's not just flat. You know, you've got math involved. Um so we're completely open to that and and we have done it in the past.
Right. So so with a point of order, I mean, definitely that we we wouldn't be able to take any of any of that into consideration. It'd be specifically uh based on the the what would you would you submit for the bidding, the pricing, meeting all the uh you know, the financial uh expectations that City Hall would have uh as well as, you know, whatever experience you have for that for that particular project. I think anything else you do is above and beyond. I just wanted to just make sure, you know, from from a point of order, that uh, you know, anything above and beyond just what I kind of stated. Uh for the ci- on for the city, you know, on behalf of the tax dollars of the residents, we have to look at the experience and uh ensuring that the work undertaken doesn't get delayed, right? And and we've had that experience in other areas. Uh Frank, what is the proposed start date for this? And is it adjustable or is it a hard date?
So so the the project's start date um is is as soon as practicable. Um the construction schedule at this point, if we award a contract tonight, there's sufficient time to be able to complete the project prior to the end of fiscal year. We've been working with uh Yuvia and Mike on alignment of these projects to uh the fiscal year ending September thirty. Um and and another piece on this also, um the bids were opened on uh March sixteenth. Um and so there's a provision within the contract documents that uh stipulates the uh the prices uh, you know, are to be held for forty-five days. Um and so that would be April thirtieth. Um so if if there were be to be delays with regard to award beyond April thirtieth, there wouldn't be a guarantee that the prices could be held necessarily. And then they also, the other thing is, is if we didn't get started um soon, uh it might be more difficult to be able to meet the per uh construction schedule completion prior to September thirty.
Got it. So what's the i- in your perspective, what is the no later than date that we have to award? To to not go in the next fiscal year?
By the schedule that we had laid out, it was it was this meeting. So it wasn't it it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as far as as next month's meeting. So we, if we wait until next month, we don't anticipate we'd be able to keep the schedule.
Okay, uh. What about a decision, what about a decision by Monday?
Um, I, you know, I haven't, I haven't run a fine tooth comb on it. Um, a, a week's delay is probably going to be something that could happen. Um, and you know, the, the schedule could be met.
Mayor Wallace, this is Veronica Rivera, City Assistant City Attorney. Um, if you're um looking at another date, I assume, and I just wanted to make sure that we understand. The question is that uh, then you would be considering having a special called meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Uh, a- a- and that is only on the, on the premise of what Mayor Pro Tim Harvey brought up from, from the get-go. Which is, we, we have been heavily been advocating for employing and, and, and doing uh business with. Entities and organizations within the city of Maynor. Uh, and um, you know, a- a- and in this aspect, uh, to at least offer the due diligence. So if there was con- confusion or, or uh unawareness of certain things. That needed to be on the particular checklist and not the dialogue or whatever happened to provide other aspects of it. To at least be able to try to afford that if we have room on the calendar. Uh, and it, and if you're saying that the only way to potentially make room is do a special election. Um, you know, Frank, you're the one that knows the timelines and I know that we don't want to delay this, we don't want to go into another fiscal year. Um, I, if we can make it work, that's what I would want to recommend as a motion to council. So um, City Hall, you, you all let us know if, if that's something that's feasible. I will say this again to, to the Forsyth Brothers, um, you know. Uh, if, if we're able to make that happen, you submit the paperwork and if it doesn't go in your favor again, there's nothing else that we're going to be able to do. Um, you know, uh, you know, so I just want to at least put that out.
Understood. Completely, uh, we appreciate the opportunity and, and losing, you know, not every job goes to us. Uh, it's just really felt that there were some things that, if, part of the recommendation that just, just. Were missing and uh, we needed to advocate for ourselves on this one. We typically just, if you lose, you, you lose and you, you get them on the next one, but.
Mayor, I'm, I'm going to echo John real quick. Uh, do, do what's in the best interest of your taxpayers. Uh, I, I sense a little bit of, 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 uh, of, of, not conflict, but. Uh, okay, I can't circle back for the right word. But uh, do, do what's best for your taxpayers. We're big kids. Uh, we have work in front of us, we want to capture every job. Uh, but we're also big kids, uh, and, and we also want to use this meeting as a springboard. Uh, because Councilwoman Wallace had a really great idea. Uh, to possibly come up with some form of training regimen, maybe where the city and, and FBI could, could uh partner. To, to, to develop some kind of system where we could provide a. Training mechanism for young people in the community. Um, so, so do, do what you gotta do. I mean, we're, we're big kids, so. Again, we want to capture every job, we want to capture this one, but we're also big kids, so.
No, I appreciate it and I appreciate y'all at least, you know, uh, doing the part to, to speak up and highlight. You know, where the potentially may have been some area just miscommunication in, in, in the process. And uh, uh, with that being the case, then I open the floor to a motion, whatever, whatever motion transits council.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion um that we uh table this item and pick it back up. Um, on a special election, no later than um Tuesday.
Special meeting, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I heard, I thought I heard that earlier, a special meeting, I know later than Tuesday, um, April the twenty-seventh.
And, and let me, I'm sorry, council member, we're, uh, we need backup materials so that we have time to. Do the research that we normally do and I want to make sure that we're not getting that information on Tuesday. Or Monday, I'd, I'd like it this week if possible.
Also, I'm sorry, also as a reminder, I have to post within seventy-two hours of that.
Yeah, so I'll, is that um, Forsyth Brothers, is that something you all can get to them tomorrow?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, so and the, the materials that will be submitted, just so, so we're clear. Um, because in terms of uh, project references, were there additional paving projects that would be submitted or?
Frank, I have to confess to you, we, we keep a boilerplate list of projects on a year-by-year basis. And, and those are kind of generic in nature. And some of those will, will have the elements that you're talking about in them. We just didn't craft that list specifically to this job. Uh, example, uh, Williamson County, uh, we, we rebuilt eight hundred feet of county road. For them uh with daily lane closures. And so that's not listed as a paving project, although it had a significant amount of paving in it. Uh, so just, you know.
So let's, let's just do this, I mean, if, if this is what council ends up voting in the place. Uh, Frank, Tom, can you all get the specifics of what you need to fill out the rest of the package, do the proper uh assessment? Uh, can you get that out to them probably by, by, by noon tomorrow? And then whatever deadline, Tom and Frank, that you all have to get everything back in and do the proper analysis you, you all need to do.
Um. Mayor, Mayor Wallace, yeah, we, the, the list that we have provided, it, 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 it's comprehensive and it includes all. Necessary required information, so uh, we aren't gonna, we wouldn't ask for anything different than we've already asked for. Um, so it, it would be additional submittals beyond what was submitted before, maybe with more information or clarification. But, but the, the list is the same one I've been using for twenty-one years.
Okay, got it. So we had a, a prop, it's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
And seconded by Councilman Anna Weir, do I have any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? Uh, oh, no, no, favorite, um. No question, motion, roll call, what's that?
Mayor Wallace?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, gentlemen, hopefully you're able to provide the information and we can review it. Uh, Yuvia?
Mayor.
Yep.
If, if I can, what we'll do is count our seventy-two hours back. Uh, let you all know when the next meeting can take place.
Okay.
Uh, is the preference during the day or in the evening? I think daytimes are difficult for, for some members of council.
I think it's lunchtime was pretty much uh, uh, ideal, um. I, I think that's probably going to be probably the, the standard for, you know, these type of last, last, last call meetings.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that together and then contact Forsyth and let them know what. Well, not what we need, but when we need to buy.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, gentlemen, you all have a good evening. Thank you for uh jumping on here uh and providing your additional insight.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Wallace, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. Thank you for this opportunity and sorry to extend your meeting uh longer, but we, we thank you for it.
No problem, you have a good one.
You too, also. Good night.
All right, moving on to agenda item number four, consideration discussion. That, we, we don't have anybody else on to speak on it, on a, a gen item, do we?
We do not.
Okay. Um, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution expressing intent to finance expenditures. To be incurred by the city of Maynor, Texas, Tom?
Uh, Mayor, this number four through, I think, number nine are probably going to be led by either our attorneys or our Pid folks. Uh, I'll, I'll turn this over to Veronica.
Okay, well, Tom, real quick, are, so are, are they all together?
They're, they're all separate, um, they need to be voted on separately, but they're all part of the same project.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Tom, um, Mayor, council members, Veronica Rivera, again, Assistant City Attorney. And um, we had a pit committee meeting prior to the city council meeting where we discussed these items. Uh, this is regarding Maynor Heights um pit project. And um, you have several members from the um cities consulting team and city team. That have worked on all these items, there are six items related to Maynor Heights. Um, and then you also have um here, the underwriters. And also developers team that are here to answer questions. I don't believe um, the, the developers team is wanting to make a presentation, but I will um defer to Tally. Right now, if uh, if she does or does not, or is here for resource.
Yeah, we, we're just here to answer any questions anybody has.
Okay, and um, as I mentioned to you, we're here on six items, but this is, this is a continuation. We will come back to you on May the fifth with um additional ordinances before we actually issue bonds. And so the first item that we have is, is um. And that is the reimbursement resolution that we would like the city council to consider. And um, bond counsel, uh Gregory Miller with Bickerstaff is also on the line. And he can uh discuss the uh, the reimbursement resolution, basically what we're trying, what, what. The reason that we placed this item on the agenda is as um, to follow state and federal statutes. Basically for tax purposes, um, so that the city can reimburse itself out of Pid funding. And it's um specific to a finite, it's uh specific to an amount. And it has everything to do with one particular project and that's Old Kimbrough Road. Um, as we began going through this project, um, there is a line, a water line. That is a man the line that will eventually be decommissioned and we will need an easement then. Um, to assist with the project for the city. You also have the city engineer here to, that can speak a little bit further on that project as well.
Got it.
So that's agenda item number four.
Okay, um, do I have a motion on the floor?
I would like to make a motion that we approve and authorize resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero four. Expressing intent to finance expenditures to be incurred by the city of Maynor, Texas.
All right, it's been properly motioned, I have a second?
Second.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Jean Krupa, do I have any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill? Yes, Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number five, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution of the city of Maynor, Texas. Approving and authorizing the Maynor Heights Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement for the major improvement area.
Uh, Mayor and council members, on this agenda item number five, this is an agreement uh regarding. There are, regarding a portion of the project, so there are two um improvement areas. One is called improvement area number one and two, and then the major improvement area. And this is the um agreement that covers the major improvement area, which also covers the main uh wastewater treatment plant. Uh, it is set for the obligation between the city and the developer on, or owner. On what will be paid out and, or, or they will be reimbursed and it caps it at um what is provided in the, in the preliminary. Um, service and assessment plan, which is approximately seven million dollars. You have approved and uh the um acquisition reimbursement agreement for improvement area. Number one and two previously in March, um, I believe it was March seventeen.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we. Uh, approve the resolution of the city of Maynor, Texas approving and authorizing the mayor. Heights Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement, major improvement area section.
It's been motioned, do I have a second?
I second it.
And it was seconded by. Who got it first? Was that you, Ann, or?
Not me.
No, I, I saw Emily's.
Raise your hand, they can raise.
That was me.
Oh, okay, got it. All right, so you got the second then, okay. I don't have everybody on my first, on my first page, I made it harder to see who said what. Okay, uh, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill? Yes, Councilmember Weir? Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number six, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution of the city of Maynor, Texas. Approving and authorizing a Pid financing agreement.
And, and again, Mayor and council members, I will turn this item over to um your. Pit administrator, John Snyder, to just provide additional information on this agreement.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Veronica. Uh, yeah, so this is John Snyder with E3 Works. Um, the Pid Finance Agreement is an agreement between the city and the developer that's really laying out the. The rules under which the, the developer can get reimbursement uh from the bid. So it's talking about everything on conditions of construction to what documents do they need to submit uh to get reimbursement and uh. You know, basically just the overall process for how all of that works. So I, I, I didn't draft this document, uh, I believe Tally Williams, uh, developer counsel did. So if there's specific questions, she'd probably be best to, to answer them, but that's uh, that's at least the overall gist of what the document does.
All right, do I have them? Go ahead, someone else is going to say something?
I was just going to say, and it has been re- reviewed by city attorney's office.
Okay, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for the city of Maynor. Texas approving and authorizing a Pid finance agreement.
It's been motioned, do I have a second?
My second.
All right, and seconded by Councilwoman Wallace, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill? Yes, Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number seven, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution of the city of Maynor, Texas. Determining the cost of certain authorized improvements to be financed by the Maynor Heights Public Improvement District. Approving a preliminary service and assessment plan, including the proposed assessment roles. Calling for notice of a public hearing for May fifth, twenty twenty-one to consider an ordinance. Leaving assessments on property located within the Maynor Heights Public Improvement District, directing the filing of the proposed assessment roles. With the city secretary to make said proposed assessment roles available for public inspection. Directing city staff to publish in mail notice of said public hearing and resolving other matters related to the foregoing.
I do believe that's the longest agenda item I've seen ever on council since I've been on.
And you can thank uh, the attorney general's office for the requirements on this, again, council members and mayor. Um, I will turn this item over to um pit administrator, John Snyder, to pr- provide you additional information and presentation.
Thank you. So the, the item before you is the preliminary service and assessment plan. Uh, this, this is not actually leaving the assessments, that'll be done in uh, in two weeks. What this is doing is basically we have our best estimate of what the par amount of the bonds will be. Uh, we're estimating six million, five thousand. For, you know, improve there for the major improvement area. Um, and subject to final pricing, those will be, uh, those will be revised up or down. Um, but uh, we do have the assessment roles in here, so that if anybody has any questions, they'll be available for public inspection. Uh, which is really the purpose of the preliminary SAP, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
There, I'd like to make a motion that we approve agenda item number seven as stated and read in this council meeting.
Okay, it's been motioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, taken by Councilman Hill, Deja Hill. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none. It took me longer to read it than for y'all to vote on it. Roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill? Yes. Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number eight, consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution of the city of Maynor, Texas approving and authorizing. The distribution of a preliminary limited offering memorandum for city of Maynor, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond Series twenty twenty-one, Maynor Heights Public Improvement District Major Improvement. Area project.
Again, mayor and council members, I will turn it over to the PIT administrator, John Snyder.
Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to take number eight and nine together. They're really the same item, just for the two different issues. Really what, what this document is, is it's the preliminary limited offering memorandum. So this is what the underwriters. FMS bond will be using to market the bonds. And so it, it basically is summarizing. All the various documents, whether it's the service and assessment plan, the PID finance agreement, the adventure. As well as all the due diligence that, that FMS has performed on the developer as well as the city. And I believe Tripp Davenport and Robert Rivera with FMS are on the line and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, do I have a motion on the floor for item number eight and item number nine, which is the consideration discussion of possible action on a resolution of the city of Maynor, Texas approving and authorizing. The distribution of a preliminary limited offering memorandum for the city of Maynor, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond Series twenty twenty-one, Maynor Heights Public Improvement District Improvement Area. Number one through two project.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, to approve the resolutions for item numbers eight and nine on the agenda as stated by yourself.
All right, it's in motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, you getting all the seconds this time. All right, any questions in the motion? Questions in the motion?
I have one, one question. And I think I know the answer. I just want to be a thousand percent sure. Tom. When we're bonding these, what implication does it have on for other projects we might want to go to the bogus for in the future?
Uh, these types of bonds, as I've, I've talked to our financial consultant, would not affect. Bonds that we might need for, let's say wastewater treatment, things of that sort. I think Chris is on, on as well and, and she can confirm or, or.
That is correct, Tom. And if we go over our bank qualified limit, there's a provision in the contract for them to rebate that back if we have to issue bonds.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I figured out the case, I just wanted to make sure.
I, I had asked that question a while back because I was concerned about things we might want to bond with regard to. These bonds and, and credit ratings and was assured that we would, we should be fine.
All right.
And, and this is an, this is an assessment and it's, it's the responsibility of the PID. Only and the city is prohibited from paying these bonds in the future.
Oh, thanks for that clarification.
Thanks, Chris.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
While, while we discussed both items eight and nine, for just simplicity, we do ask that you have two separate motions, one for item eight and one for item nine. So if the same two, two council members had made the motion, if they're okay in separating them, or if you have. Different council members that make the motion, we again ask that there be two motions.
So, what was it?
Councilmember Wallace was fine with that.
Okay, Jean, are you good with that?
Mayor, I would be willing to make two separate motions, yes.
Right, so the amendment is made. Um, do I have, you can do a roll call on agenda item number eight, please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
Agenda item number eight passes. Roll call for agenda item number nine, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill? Yes. Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa?
Yes.
All right, moving on to agenda item number ten, consideration discussion of possible action on the ordinance rezoning two point one three acres more or less. For lot four Blue Bonnet Business Park Section one and being located at fifteen seven two one US Highway two ninety east from agricultural A to heavy commercial C three.
Mayor, this is the public hearing that you had a little while ago. And staff is recommending that the. C two designation be assigned to this particular property rather than the C three.
Okay, is this the one with the letter from Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Okay, um, so is this downgrade to the C two? I don't know if it's downgrade. I'm understanding downgrade because it's from a three to a two.
It's, it's less intense. As, as the numbers go up, so does the intensity of the potential development.
Okay, so with you now going to a recommendation of a C two, the.
It's more retail oriented and, and.
Yeah, does he still have the same concerns?
He doesn't want it zoned commercial at all, is what I recall reading.
Okay, Scott, are you able to speak on his concern on this one?
Um, I mean, he. Likes the agricultural openness of that area. I mean, it's, the city is growing. Eastward and Elgin's growing west, so it's sort of developments happening out there and. Back in twenty seventeen when it was annexed, I mean, the whole. Purpose of the city annexing along two ninety was to capture future commercial growth. And so the intent was over time. These properties would be zoned and used commercially, the ones up front on two ninety and I've access directly off two ninety. Mr. Mercer, he, he has a house behind this property which accesses off Belker. Then there's, there's a drainage that goes passive, but part of their site development would be. You know, drainage study and if, if detention was necessary and all of that would be looked at. And so he just doesn't, doesn't want change.
His preference is to leave it alone.
Okay.
I will.
Go ahead.
A while back, a different applicant, same owner, but different applicant had requested to rezone it to light industrial. Some members of council might be there for that, but it was for an AmeriGas. They wanted to do a little, you know. Gas tank there and distribute from there. And, you know, we recommended denial and it was nice. Obviously, that's why it still has the agricultural designation on it today. But had the city not annexed it in twenty seventeen, that. That would have gone through the county and, you know, the, the city doesn't regulate land use in our ETJ and the county, you know, they just look at. You know, the drainage and not really the use of the property. So, you know, had this not been annexed by the city. In twenty seventeen, it likely would be an AmeriGas facility right now, which. Would be more industrial than what they're proposing. So with it being in the city kind of helps to. Regulate and control the types of uses that are there.
Got it. So, a- and looking at this guy's letter, to me, it seems the, the main heavy thing that comes on this letter is, is the water. Situation, the flooding and so forth, but that wouldn't necessarily be an issue. Based upon whatever's proposed with the C two and them having to ensure. That whatever construction doesn't add to and make it, make flooding worse. They would actually have to adjust. And, and find ways to resolve the flooding, correct?
Right, yeah, as part of the requirements is they can't, flows off the property during a storm event can't exceed. The non-storm event period. So if, when it rains, the water. Has to be detained and then released at a rate that would be equivalent to. Normal rates. So it wouldn't cause downstream flooding.
Okay, yeah, I, I think for me, one of the big concerns in just thinking about it is like over there with. Fred Nance Place and all the, the water flooding that, that's right there in that place is, you know, constructed. So, okay, is there a motion on the floor?
I'm not sure if anybody's muted that might be making a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, city council, approve the ordinance rezoning. Two point one three acres more or less, lot four Blue Bonnet Business Park Section one. And being located at one five seven two one US Highway two ninety east from agriculture to medium commercial two. What questions?
All right, it's been motioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, taken by Councilwoman Ware. Questions to the motion. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
All right, so. I just want to have some clarity, I guess, on that statement because his specific line is. This property is very low. It does not drain properly. And change will cause flooding to his property and other properties in close proximity. And so what I hear you saying is that our, how we do our codes and, and. Construction enforcement, what, what have you, will cause. Whether, where, will assure that that would not happen?
So if we follow Austin's drainage criteria manual, which like I said, it flows off the property can't exceed. Like during a storm event, they can't, they can't, the waters can't flow on the property. It has to be detained if, if that's what the study, the drainage study will say. So if his property doesn't drain correctly, because that's how his property is changed over time or been graded. The detention and everything on this property that, when it gets developed. Wouldn't fix his property. I mean, that's, it's his property to take care of, if that makes sense. So. The water would be detained and released at the same rate that it is now. And so it wouldn't be worsening, it shouldn't be worsening his property, but it's not gonna. Fix his property because it's, it, it just keeps things as they are.
That's something that we've mentioned to Mr. Mercer.
Uh, he's only provided the letter. He hasn't reached out in other ways.
Is that something that could be explained to him if he were to reach out to you all?
Yes.
All right, any additional questions?
So I see one, the, or I said C one, C two. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
I, I have one more question to that. I'm sorry, it just popped in my head. So. Uh, just follow up on that. So let's say. That does not happen. And the water rate is released. At, at a capacity more than what it is now. What typically happens in those cases, or those situations?
I may have to let Frank answer that. I haven't encountered that.
So, so we, we have had some circumstances in the past where detention. And conveyance has been challenged. If, you know, in order for a, a project to be approved within the city. Compliance with ordinance requirements is, is, you know, part of the review and approval process. So. A developer of tract of land for either subdivision or site development. Needs to comply with the requirements of the ordinance that post-development stormwater flows. Are equal to or less than the pre-development and they use detention ponds for that. Occasionally, studies, especially in lower regions of drainage basins, can actually determine an early release. Of stormwater is beneficial within the basin. It has to do when you're, when the high flow, the highest flow rate. Will be traveling through the basin versus when you release. Because it takes some time for it to travel through. And so all of those things are evaluated. Plus the conveyance of that concentrated storm flow. If everything is done in compliance with city ordinances and an adjacent property owner has an issue. Then it's typically a civil action between the two property owners. That occurs. And it doesn't happen very often, but, you know, the city has the ordinances in place to provide for. Those detention and conveyances. To conform with the ordinance requirements so that they don't negatively impair downstream property owners. But occasionally there are civil actions that happen around that.
Any additional questions?
Well, thanks for that, Frank.
Sure.
Deja, you have questions too?
Yes, I just wanted to know if C two was the. The least of the highest that could be approved in order for them to be able to. Put whatever they wanted to do for the land use, I guess, for the additional structure, the, the use of the. Business.
Yes, yeah, if it were, if, if you all go to C one, it would, it wouldn't allow other use and. And that's totally within your purview to do if you wanted. To see one light commercial, but it would prohibit this potential development.
Okay. And without a site, go ahead.
I was gonna say C two, C one are both consistent with what we anticipate along. Two ninety for a mix of, of commercial types of occupancies. So C two is, is completely in keeping with other properties we've zoned along two ninety.
I was assuming that too. I knew that that was probably most of the intent, but I guess being so close to or backing up. Literally, I guess, kind of sharing fences with residents. If that's also within that, within that scale of wanting to do that, but. I guess if. No, that's my only question.
And for the Jason residential that's there, we do have buffer yard standards. And so within our code, agricultural is considered a residential zone. And so when commercial develops next to residential zoning, there's twenty-five foot landscaped buffer yards that are required. And so, you know, between this property and Mr. Mercer's property and some of the Jason properties, there would be additional landscaping above what they're required to do normally anyways, just to. Provide visual and noise and all that blocking, so.
Okay, and so without a site plan though, we, we won't know like any specifics about like that traffic roadway. You know, to know if they would, I guess, in the letter that we received, they mentioned about just being aware of the neighborhood. Kids and things like that in the area. So having that traffic coming through. We would know like if they wanted to have their own entryway for their business building, right? Without a site plan.
Yeah, the site plan will show all the access, but. This property is only accessed from two ninety, so they shouldn't be connecting to Volker Lane.
Okay. Any extra noise or light pollution that would go in there too?
We have ordinances, so you know, they'll have to submit like a photometric and all the lights have to be shielded and everything. But then additionally, there are. You know, we have environmental standards for noise and light and glare that are for every property. But when they're excessive, they can, there are mechanisms for them to go through, you know, code enforcement and all that.
Okay, I knew about those being like for a city of Maynor residents, but for ETJ, I didn't. Okay, I knew about those being like for a city of Maynor residents, but for ETJ, I didn't know if that was still applicable. That's all my questions. Thank you, Scott.
Any additional questions?
I I just wanted to point out, this is actually city limits, not ETJ.
Yes.
That's even better, Tom. Thank you.
Here to help.
Any additional questions? If none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill? Yes. Councilmember Weir?
Yes, I'm making sure we're voting on the C two, right?
Yes, that was the motion, I believe.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, most passes agenda item eleven is was a postponed item. Uh, consideration discussion of possible action on a waiver from the Manor Code of Ordinance, Chapter fifteen, Article fifteen point zero one, Site Development Plans, Article fifteen point zero two, Parking Standards, and Article fifteen point zero three, Landscaping and Screening on Lots Two and Three, Block eleven, A uh A dot E oh A E Lane Edition one oh nine East Murray Avenue. Hmm, Scott is with you?
Uh, yeah, I didn't have Tom wanted to talk about it as well, but um.
We've done, I was muted, I'm sorry. Um, this is a a piece of property in the older part of town. Uh, I think there's maps on the backup. I don't, I'm not looking at them directly. Uh, and they're wanting to, I I believe there there's two lots there. Um, there have been developments proposed through the years for those two lots and for whatever reason, uh, things never moved forward. And I think what they're looking for right now, and help me, Scott, are or is the ability to put in food trailers?
Yes.
And um, we need to make decisions on where these things may or may not be appropriate. Uh, this is behind a commercial property. It's behind Sonic. It's across the street from uh Bluebonnet uh offices. But it's not a well-traveled street with regard to, let's say, the the food trailers that we have on the corner of Murray and um
Lexington.
Yeah, and Lexington. I'm sorry, just drew a blank. And so uh there's just a question about how far into areas do we want to bring food trailers? Most that we have here are on busier streets like Parsons, uh, two ninety, uh Lexington. Um, this, this is just not a a busy road. We did have um an ice cream trailer there for years, for years, um, and they enjoyed some grandfathering uh because of the length of time that they were there. Uh, they subsequently moved out. We had another food trailer move in. Parking became a problem. Uh, it it just, it became a problem. Uh, so again, we need to make some decisions as to how far into streets that aren't necessarily well-traveled. Do we want to add more traffic and parking issues, things like that?
So uh, from my understanding and from previous conversations, I'm recalling, uh, I I thought we had talked about a um mobile truck or a food truck, whatever you want to call it, um, policy or ordinance. And that, and and correct me if I'm incorrect on this, because I know this is probably about a half a year, year conversation ago, uh, that that we all kind of had. Um, in that the current food trucks are under um under waivers of previous administration in that that was intentional as a way to hopefully identify permanent mobile food truck yards and then have those waivers expire and then have them go to the designated mobile food truck areas uh in the city.
So originally, the the um plan for food trailer courts were to locate them along arterials such as two ninety, maybe nine seventy-three. Um, not to locate these on on collector or major collector roads, but it didn't address that. The standard talked about three or more trailers um in one of these food courts or decide or that's how you would describe a a food court with three or more trailers. What we're having happen through throughout the city is people putting two food trucks on one lot because our ordinances don't prohibit that. And four trucks on two lots that are have that are adjacent to each other, and that certainly wasn't intended. Um, and we need to make some modifications because there's and I hate to say this, council, previous councils wanted businesses to come in, get established and and hopefully go to brick and mortar. Um, we've seen that happen once. Um, and so, you know, we 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 need to address this. Uh, I'm a fan of them. I I kind of like them. They all offer a variety of foods, but they need to be located appropriately.
All right, so I think this goes back one to the the ordinance piece of it. And it that's my fault. I I know I dropped the ball on following up on that, so uh, we we need to get something crafted and revised. Um, especially now that we're doing all this other stuff regarding the city and and how.
There there were unintended consequences with the other ordinances.
Um, so what other options are there if if the location that uh is being looked at does not meet the current ordinance, then where are the other options where it does meet the ordinance?
Well, it it doesn't not meet the ordinance. It's owned commercial, which would allow the food trailers. What they're asking for is the same thing that all the others have asked for, which is a waiver to the landscaping and screening requirements. The parking standards, which means uh cliche and and, you know, no parking lot, no, no trees or shrubs.
Like a permanent, like a permanent structure.
Yeah, and and the reason that the waivers were popular was because we didn't want to um have them develop those plans permanently and then have to rip all of that yeah, instruction out when a permanent structure came along. It it's, you know, it it's a difficult decision. I mean, the the zoning would allow it. Um, if they were to put in paved parking, landscaping and screening and things of that sort, they'd probably be good to go, uh, right, Scott?
Uh, yes, yeah.
And so.
Site knowledge process.
Right.
How long does the waiver last?
Permanent.
Well, the waiver, um, what we do is condition waivers to the specific development so that they're not forever. A board of adjustment action, if you went that route, would uh stay with the property forever. And so with the waivers, we we condition those um um or try to condition those on what's being asked for.
Right, okay, because I I wouldn't want to screw someone when we haven't had our ordinances changed. And we still have others that are on these waivers, right? Um, but a conditional would probably be ideal as we're also now going into the one-year comprehensive plan. We'll have a better fleshed out, something blessed off, the city residents agree upon. And then hopefully, we also have this revised ordinance. Uh, so then once the waiver expires, there is designated places for mobile food truck yards or or truck yard.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this because it it's true, but we have food trucks on Parsons next to single-family homes that were allowed because the zoning on a good stretch of Parsons is commercial. And in this case, it's zoned commercial and there really isn't any residential around it, so it's 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 difficult. It's just, do we want to add to that block? Uh, a development that doesn't meet our requirements. Do we want to waive that requirement?
All right, so and looking at this motion, it says a possible action on a waiver. Does does that need to be a conditional waiver instead of just a waiver?
It could be a waiver for this for I don't know if we know who who the uh food trucks would be. Um, they're renewable, aren't they, Scott? Every couple of years, don't they have to?
Yeah, specific uh mobile food vendors, you know, their their license or their permits are good for one year. What we've done on other property.
And you're live, you you got a hot mic.
Um, what we've done with other properties for that condition is basically on the use. So basically, as long as the property has mobile food vendors, it has a site development waiver, but if anyone else came in with a different use, then they'd have to go through the site development process.
Yeah, no, what I what I'm thinking of is the actual waiver for a specific time for that particular use as well. Because we're talking about in this sense, you know, we won't, we don't want to prohibit individuals from starting a business, launching a business or whatever. You know, e- especially in our kind of a small-town city, but we also don't want to have a automatic recurring waiver for them to maintain that type of business when we're still trying to progress the city and design the city for the next thirty years and even more, right? So it needs to be a conditional waiver where it's like you have like a year or two. And, you know, if we're not in your phase of modifying and and building the things that are off of a comprehensive plan yet, then you probably can get another renewal for another year or another two years. But if we are in our phase of the comprehensive plan in i- in that area, then unfortunately, you're gonna have to go somewhere else.
Looking at the picture that's provided here on the information packet, Mayor.
Yeah.
It's kitty corner to already a lot that has three, count them, three food trucks or food trailers on them already. Yes, it's along Lexington, along Murray.
That one has two, that 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 one you see in the middle, there's actually just a tent. One of those, it only has two.
Yeah, it's only two. It's the it's the it's the ice cream or snow cone place and the uh the tacos next to the main.
Correct.
And what happens is here is that you have businesses in the area that could utilize another source of food. Plus, my big question is are these Maynor residents that are putting this together?
Well, we we can't ask that, nor can we base a decision on it.
They they are here if y'all would like to speak with them.
All right, I I see him on, I see him on my screen. It's just ever since I lived in Maynor, it's from two thousand and six, there's been a business there of some sort. And like uh Tom said, it was a snow cone business there for many, many, many years. So
The uh Councilman Krupas, the snow cone place was actually next door.
It was?
Yeah, but the problem was there was no parking. There was nothing designated. When the ice cream place, which is now on the other corner, moved in, we had to order them off of that property or deny their renewal because they wouldn't comply. They parked all over the lawns. They parked all over the street. They didn't observe no parking signs.
So so back 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 point of order, point of order.
Sure.
The 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 key thing here is we're talking about the growth of the city and how it needs to be built out based off of the comprehensive plan, based off of the downtown revitalization effort and everything else, right? We cannot afford to just give uh in perpetuity, if if I said that word right, waiver when we do not know and have no tangible plan of how that area i- is is uh going to be planned to look like with the city's, the the resident's blessing.
I don't see how we can re- refuse somebody of business on a plan that isn't in finalization or has been adopted. That's the problem I'm having is that if you're gonna use that basis, then you might as well say all the developments we have going on and being built aren't per our comprehensive plan. We don't have one in place.
Exactly.
Base decisions on that.
New decision, new decisions going forward have to have that understanding and we have, that's why we're trying to get the comprehensive plan underway. But you can also do a piece of, hey, a conditional waiver. You have blessing and permission to operate your food truck there for two years. You can come back for a waiver, but if we're doing something or we have something planned for that area after those two years, you may not get, you may not receive a renewal of your waiver.
I buy that, Mayor. I buy that very fully.
So that that is my recommendation. Uh, Tom, is there any, is there any legal reason why we cannot give a conditional waiver that also has a condition on time?
Um, I don't know if our legal staff is here. I my my inclination is, yes, we can do it because it's a waiver. If they were asking for a variance, the answer to that would be no. Um.
This is, this is Veronica. I am on I am on, I was just trying to turn on my video. There you go. Uh, yes, the um, I was also looking up the the code with regard to um providing if there were any prohibitions in your code, and I am not seeing a prohibition. So if this, if council would like to put um any type of limitations as part of your motion, you can put limitations on your motion.
Yeah, and that's what I thought we could do with a waiver.
Yeah, I mean, I want to take care of people that want to bring businesses, but at the same time, we we also have to make sure we're planning for the growth.
And Mayor.
Go ahead.
One more thing, it wouldn't be a cond- I I don't want y'all to use a conditional waiver. I mean, it is a waiver. You're just putting a limit on it.
Okay.
A limit with.
Okay, no problem. I was just saying conditional, because I I think Tom or Scott had said something about conditional, so I didn't know, you know.
Yeah, I I probably used the wrong word.
No problem, no problem. Okay. Yeah, I mean, so if if we went with a time, uh, if we went with a time expiration for a renewal for same type of use, what would be ideal? Uh, Tom, Scott?
I'm I'm inclined to say three years, just because we're, you know, fifteen, seventeen months out from a comprehensive plan. And, you know, the the folks who own this property would need time. I'm sure they're gonna have leases for whatever tenants and and I I don't want to get into. I want everybody to have enough time to
Right.
do what they need to do without complicating it any more than it would be already.
Okay, sounds good.
The only thing, Mayor, I I would advise, and as long as all of you are looking at this picture, look kitty corner to that piece of property and what it looks like. And while the tacos are good and the ice cream's good, the access to it is poor. Um, the paving is or the 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 stone is poor. I'd like something to see something a little more designated that would accommodate the parking that's necessary for two food trailers, whatever that is. Um, so that we don't wind up with a a mishmash of of stone wherever somebody decided to put it.
Yeah. Okay, um, do I have a motion?
Mayor, man, the the property owners did sign up to speak.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, go ahead, uh, comments? Um, go ahead, comments? I think you're on mute.
There we go. Sorry about that. Yes. Eric Thomason and my wife Rebecca, thanks for having me, Mayor, City Council. I definitely like the idea of the three-year temporary. We can work with that. Probably two years would be would be fine. We'd actually like to put a. A standing structure there at some point. The food trucks are just something that we could get up. About relatively easily. We bought the property back in March, COVID and stuff hit, so that took a while. Trying to get things motioned and then we've been talking to Scott for probably. At least six months trying to figure out what we can do with the property, you know. I do see the food truck across the street. We were looking at doing something much nicer than that. We even thought about having it where they could come off off of Murray and Park actually own the property. By setting up a designated parking area there. You know, to get them off the street like your concern was. And then, you know, nice picnic tables, a couple of nice food trucks. Well lit lighting. You know, to make money. I mean, that's the point. We're trying to generate some revenue off of that. Property and make it nice for the residents that live there and are close by. You know, an option to do something outdoors due to COVID, you know, when when the weather is nice and that type of thing, so. I hope you approve it and you know, we'd like to get started on as soon as we can.
I was just gonna say, I I would offer, take the three years and if you're successful in getting something in less.
Now, I I I appreciate your comments and you know, I appreciate you even saying, you know, less years is is viable for you, right? That means a lot more than someone coming in saying, no, I need more, give me more, right? That that shows that, you know, you understand the tough decisions we're in, especially as. We don't necessarily have a a a a plan in our hands right now. Of how Mainer needs to grow and we don't want to unfortunately make permanent things. And then we end up finding that might have been a best suitable place for. Something else for you all that could potentially be even more profitable, right? So no, I appreciate your remarks. I appreciate you sitting there as as we kind of debated amongst ourselves. So welcome, welcome to the lines then here. And with that, do you have anything else you want to say before I see if there's a motion out there?
My wife.
Oh, yeah, we're business owners here in Austin and have been for over twenty-five years. So and we're excited about being a Maynor and it just, we've noticed it's. Really boomed and we're really excited and to be a part of that and want to be a part of. Setting something up in Nice and Maynor. You think it's gonna be really big.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. All right, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make the motion. Let's see, like make a motion. At City Council. I guess we would have to now, but we're approving. A waiver. With a three-year limit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, from Maynor Code. Ordinance, Chapter fifteen, Article fifteen point zero one. Site development plans, Article fifteen point. Zero two parking standards, Article fifteen point zero three landscaping and screening. Lots two and three block. Eleven A E Lane Edition, one oh nine Murray Avenue.
And Mayor Pro-Tam, if if I could. My recommendation, if if you're willing, would be that. We don't waive all parking. Requirements that the parking be that is appropriate for the two food trailers be provided on site.
Okay, I'm in that that the parking. Be on site. My motion. That we don't leave that in the parking be on site.
Alright, it's been motioned of second.
Second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yep.
Looking at their site plan, their preliminary site plan. They're abiding by putting the trash behind a fence wall. My question is, would they be willing to maybe move one of the food trucks further back into the lot? So the gravel parking lot isn't so close to East Murray. I'm I'm okay with the plan they have here. That is just a suggestion.
Yes, that would be, that would be no problem. That I would just more, you know. Definitely, you know, any input that you guys would give us, that would be. Would greatly be appreciated, but yes, we could do that for sure.
Uh, I may add to the. There's a food truck on Parsons, which is actually a pretty good example of what we. Do more recently is where like the drive approaches because the city's right away. It still has to be the city standard, which is like a concrete drive approach. And the site development waiver is only applicable to your actual property. So once you get past that is where you can have your gravel or your cleat or however you want to. Design it that, you know, is it within the waiver requirements and all that, but. What gets put in the city's right of ways, so like the the little bit between your property line and the edge of pavement. Could be a standard drive approach.
Is concrete.
Yeah, so there's.
Can I jump in there? The Thompson family, welcome to Maynor. And I'm over or leading our Economic Development Committee. I really want to make sure that y'all have a good smooth start, so. My my hope is that you all can get some time to sit down. And you know, make sure you got a good understanding and can see some of the stuff that's already there. In the city going on and then get a good understanding from Scott, I guess, that. You have a good understanding of what we're needing there and then. Offer our Economic Development Committee. As a resource to you all when you're starting to think about opportunities later on. We have some very connected individuals. And we've been talking about how, you know. Becoming partners with our landowners in the visioning of our city over the next thirty years, so. Just wanted to communicate that to you all.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, any additional question?
I have a question, just wanted to make sure that we, that there are definitely. Food trucks already set to go as soon as we get started, or is that? Like if.
We've had like five or six people already call us to say, hey, when can we do it? I'm just saying, well, we've still got to get approval from the city.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be too too long.
Okay.
Hopefully sooner than later.
Hope hopefully you able to bring something in that we don't already have.
Oh, of course. And then once we get it set up, I would invite all of you to come out and check it out.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. Alright, any additional questions?
Mayor, to confirm, it was for three years, right?
Three years, correct.
Okay, great.
Alright, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppa.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, I appreciate it. Congratulations. We look forward to seeing what you bring into the city.
Awesome, appreciate it.
Alright, you have a good evening. Alright, moving on to agenda item number twelve. Consideration discussion, a possible action on a waiver for from Manor Court of Ordnance's Chapter. Fifteen, Article fifteen point zero one, Site Development Plans, Article fifteen point. Zero two Parking Standards and Article fifteen point zero three Landscaping and Screening on Lot Ten, Block Five. Town of Manor one oh one, East Brenham Street, Manor, Texas.
Mayor, I you read the same thing except a different location. No, 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 it's a different location. This one is along Lexington Street nine seventy-three, which was. Under the original intent of where these trailers, food trailers might be located. And for that reason, this one staff had recommended approval.
This is the one where the Jamaican, the Jamaican place was and all like right. Before you get right across from Do It, but before you get to the Maynor PD.
No.
Hmm, no, I'm trying to figure it's on like South.
It is a county corner to the Exxon station on I seven three.
Yes, okay, yes. They've already put all the stone into the parking, I think, on that one.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
And and Scott, was that for food trailer or was that for something else?
Food trailers, but again, they'll need.
What is that white trailer is?
There's a manufactured home there, a white one with white roof.
That's the property next to it.
Yeah, that that's next to it, right?
Yeah, but they'll need a a proper city drive approach. Because that doesn't get waived the access.
Okay, what's the what's the development plan currently out in that area?
The, well, Scott or I can handle this. On the south side, we've got. On the south side of Brenham, we've got commercial as part of Lagos.
Okay.
The gas station and the property behind that, I think, is all zone C one.
Yes.
Along Parsons. You get into the residential development further south and further west. These few properties here are in an area and it's already zone commercial, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's. Several of these properties in this area have already got commercial zoning, but they're occupied by single-family homes. So the zoning would allow it.
So is there a desire to have a a a truck yard in that area of of the city?
That, well, that's an individual lot. That's a fifty by one fifteen probably. It it's. Maybe, but not on that piece of property. I don't think that one's big enough. And and if we're gonna look at something like that, we, you know, we need to look. Dwyer Realty owns both sides of Parsons, south of Brenham.
One of the main requirements for. I guess you call it like a food yard, but when you get to like three or more, they can't be within three hundred feet of residential. Which is what actually ends up tripping up a lot of the properties like. The one that we're looking at previously up at Murray on Lexington, they consistently always want to put a third truck there, but. It's it's prohibited just since being a. Mobile food under park. It's it's too close to residentially owned properties. So pretty much all in town here, you're gonna be within three hundred feet of something's own residential, so. Those types of three or more types of mobile food parks. Wouldn't be permitted.
Right, now I'm just trying to think of as as this part of. The area starts to grow and we kind of talked about hopefully those houses getting. Shifting or 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 remodeled or repurposed, right, for for the area that they're zoned in now. Would that area be an area that we wanted to have developed into a longstanding? Truck yard or. Part of the development process and the planning process identify different area for that side of of the city.
So mayor, I would want to take a little time to think that through. It's in an area that we can. Consider part of our. TOD. And so it may be appropriate to establish an area. Walkability, but. We would need to look at the properties over there and and. You get just a block north and they're only twenty-five foot wide lots, and so that makes it even more difficult to develop any single lot. For any purpose. So, yeah, we we could look at that as part of the plan and maybe that's something we want to do. But yeah, I want to think it through.
So question for you, how long timeframe do you think it would take to do that assessment, identify that? Where would probably be the ideal place and then probably whenever the city gets to that point of actually. Executing on that development.
Well, here's the thing, these are all private owned properties. We cannot take those or if we try to rezone them without their permission, it's considered takings and it's illegal.
Right.
And so we would need to. Work around that somehow, which might mean purchasing a few of those properties to create a group or. Having someone else purchase a few of those properties. It it's the same issue we're gonna have with. Creating a transit oriented development in that area. They're all single family or all single. Well, family residences, whether they're manufactured homes or or site built, but. We can't just go in and rezone their land for.
Okay.
Purposes.
So this so this area is heavily contingent upon the cap metro phase two green line?
Well, it's, we we've always identified it as more of a downtown business district, which allows a more dense development. You know, moving the buildings out to the street, trying to have them develop the alleyways behind for access to parking. And we would continue to want to do that and that fits in with a TOD type of development. But again, with each of these being a separate, single-family property owner. Stringing them together could be difficult.
Right.
I'm not saying impossible, it's just. We can't just rezone their property. Or force them to take on a use that they're they're not in favor of.
Okay, so would we say to say something like a? Five-year waiver?
I would. I don't know, I'd give them a three-year waiver the same as the other, if that's what you're inclined to do, just to be consistent.
Yeah, I was just thinking because it is, and that's why I was asking those questions is because it's in a different area, maybe the growth is gonna be a bit. More delayed in that area than the other area, so that's.
With Lagos going in there, this area is growing faster than the other one.
Okay, okay.
What what I think you're gonna see because of Lagos is the property values along here increasing. Quickly because of proximity to all that new development and so I'm not sure how that's gonna tie into. Redevelopment of the area north of Brenham.
Okay.
You think we, can we hear from the owners?
Sure.
About what their short-term, long-term goals are?
Yep, definitely, let's go. I'm glad you're on here. I was getting ready to go to you, but the mayor pro Tim kicked me in my chin, so. The mic is yours.
Yeah, I'm Dennis, my wife Susan. We, it was my understanding that C one would allow. Two of those two food food carts or whatever.
That's true.
You know, we had some people check whether there's like coffee. You know, already had it, you know, try to get something like you said, something new, something looks nicer. Because we almost, they're joining three lots as well. We will fix them up, you know, we've had a dozen cars hauled up. From there in two and a half years, so we're fixing that, making it nice. But the question is, can we, are we still allowed to have two? Food carts. Or whatever they are.
Yeah, at this point in time, yes. Okay, ordinance would allow. Two. We would need.
I did. I'm sorry.
Need to fit parking for both of them, but I think that can be accomplished.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the the window off street parking, you can't park off the street.
No, I know. I know.
It's not level. So there's plenty of place to park, but. I didn't know the additional things that we might need to do, or is it ready? Is it good to go or?
Well, council hasn't voted on it yet and so once that happens. You'll either have a green light or a red light, but staff has recommended approval of this.
Appreciate it.
I I'd just like to say that like the other couple that was just talking about their food. Trailers that they want, we we've had people coming that already are established in Austin. And they're wanting to expand their food court business. And we vision it just like they do with lights, tables, make it look Austinite. You know what I'm saying? Like you go into Austin, see cool places and that's our vision of what we would like. It to look like, to have some upscale trailers there.
Right.
Definitely, you know, I I I want again, appreciate y'all staying on to be able to give your your give your comment so forth and. At least hopefully able to see, you know, us us really trying to think through and and figure out what's best to support you all as well as. You know, the future growth for the city as well and definitely want to do the support. And 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 love to see some new food be up in here, so we can we can eat it. And, you know. And uh, you know, um, that's. I I think, again, a- as we just kind of talked with the last group, um, not fully knowing what our. Uh, twenty fifty plan is gonna look like, uh, what we're trying to have. In these next thirty years, what that area may probably potentially look like, my only concern and hesitation is doing something that would give you that waiver. And, you know, the the city's kind of hand tied down the road, if there might be other great opportunities that could potentially be for you all. Um, so I'm I'm inclined to recommend doing a a similar three year uh, waiver. Uh, that's renewable contingent upon if there's nothing in development or that the city is trying to do in that area. Um, that that could be even more impactful and beneficial for for everybody.
That's good, appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Uh, with that, um, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, before a motion, I'd like to ask um, the Curlins one simple question.
Go ahead.
Um, I know you have rock already put down. Um, in the in, say, the. Southeast corner of that property. Would you be willing to use some of the? Property right adjacent to it with the white trailer on it as additional uh, parking, since you own it?
Yeah, sure, it's it's uh. You know, whatever's necessary.
You know, we've got. Can I ask, I I need to ask a question first, um. Are the, is that property under one like joint ownership or is it two separate lots that you pay taxes on or three separate lots?
We we own the four adjoining properties.
They're separate.
The each are separate though, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you pay taxes on them separately?
Okay.
And and so the answer to your question is, yes, they can do it, but you'd need a shared parking agreement.
Okay, I I I.
That's where.
Clarify that, thank you, Tom, because I'm I'm just looking at getting them. Situated in there where. They can have the maximum.
They could have the whole back.
Right.
They could have the whole back.
That's what I'm looking at, sir, is that that you get what you need and the city gets what they need and everybody's happy.
Yeah, they don't need that. We'll just use it for the carts.
Yeah, and it's a whole lot easier when you have to talk to yourself about that shared parking agreement.
Um, so uh, do you have a motion on the floor?
Yes, promotion, um, city council approved, uh, length away for three years. Um, uh, from May or code ordinance of chapter fifteen, article fifteen. Point zero one site development plans, um, with uh, what's the language again, Tom, for the parking?
I'm sorry, just uh, uh, that they provide enough parking for the two trailers.
Uh, with enough parking for the two trailers, um, and article fifteen point zero three landscaping. And screening on lot ten, block five, town of Mayor, uh, one zero one, East Brenham Street, Mayor, Texas.
All right, it's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, questions to the motion?
No questions, this um, Curlin family, um, again, I I'm offering to you the same thing. To the Thomassons, um, you know, we're we're really trying to work with our property owners and and. You know, kind of know your vision and share our vision and see how we can work collaboratively to, you know, have a. Um, uh, a a great uh, twenty fifty. Uh, at some point in time with businesses and uh, business owners and a lot of owners, landowners that are, you know, happy with the work we create together, so. Um, our education, uh, economic development team is available, uh, if you want to run questions by. Um, and um, definitely uh, reach out to staff if you need. Have questions or or whatever, and you know, we're just here to, we welcome you in your. Your businesses and we're looking forward to hopefully working together.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill. Yes. Councilmember Ware.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupan. Thank you.
All right, motion passes, congratulations, I look forward to seeing what y'all bring into the city. All right, moving on to agenda item number thirteen, consideration discussion of possible action on the purchase contract. With Timberman Commercial Investment LP for a water easement with temporary construction easement.
Frank, are you taking this up or is Sam on board?
Sam's Sam's on the call.
Okay.
Here. Yeah, this this is a uh. It's a water easement and temporary construction easement for that each east US two ninety water line. And as in previous ones, this is gonna be reimbursed by the developer. It entails a twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-eight compensation for the actual easement. And there's two separate letter agreements, he has a tenant on that property that's non-star portables. And the water line goes right through his, through his business, and so there's a ten thousand three hundred dollar compensation to the tenant. For him to move his portable buildings out of the way and then move them back after the construction's done. And there's also, he has two permanent buildings that slightly encroach on the easement, like three or four feet. And this allows them to stay there, they can't be expanded to encroach more, but they can stay there. And and the city shouldn't have any issue with that as far as maintaining the water line. So.
All right, uh, do you have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion, sorry, um, to approve the purchase contract with Timberman Commercial Investments. LP for a water easement with temporary construction easement.
All right, it's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
Again.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Ware.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Krupan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to agenda item number fifteen. Consideration discussion of possible action on applying for the Healthy Babies Bright Futures in. Mayor's Innovation Project Grant Program and authorizing uh, the mayor to sign a resolution evidencing such authorization. And so this uh, grant opportunity was emailed to me through uh. Our association with the mayor's uh, innovation uh, project, I believe that is part of the um. National League of Cities, uh, again, uh, uh, we're blessed to be a member of them. Uh, based upon us, uh, uh, our 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 rapid growth and want to be very proactive in the services and programs. Uh, so so right now, they have given us basically a a a one year at like no cost type of membership. Um, so we're definitely been receiving a lot of great things from them. This grant opportunity is to five cities, uh, most of the bright cities are larger cities. Um, as we've seen with um, some of the other opportunities that have been presented to us, like the peace challenge through Cities United and so forth. Um, we're looking at uh, potentially uh, a a ten thousand dollar grant. Uh, and it's open to individuals that have received. This grant previously, so it's open to like the winners of the twenty twenty grant cycle in any new city, so it's a potentially recurring grant opportunity. Uh, and is eligible for the following reasons to uh, reduce toxic exposures in public housing and spaces. Um, so toxic, toxic, uh, free childcare training in nap uh, nap mat exchanges. Transition to chemical free turf maintenance and reducing lead exposures through education in or remediation. Remediation projects, uh, to reduce toxic exposures in city purchasing. Such as envi- environmentally, uh, preferable purchasing policies that require products purchased. Um, uh, that are sustainable and free of neurotoxic chemicals. Um, the third option is reduce toxic exposures in food. So using municipal land for organic product cultivation, increasing availability of local. Organic produce, working collaboratively collaboratively with residents in low access food areas. To develop solutions to the lack of healthy food access. And then the fourth option is reduce toxic exposures in outdoor air. Such as planting of trees in or vegetation barriers near busy streets to reduce pollutants. Um, transitioning park management strategies to chemically free methods. And other green infrastructure projects, uh, so um, wanted to present this to council. Uh, uh, as as something that, uh, you know, uh, I think aligns with what we're trying to do. Um, and uh, any, 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 I guess. Any questions, I'll open up to the floor for questions before um, I ask for a motion.
What you want, questions from staff?
Sure, anybody.
Okay. Well, I I agree, this is a great opportunity and project. Ten thousand dollars isn't a lot of money. Um, we do not have a physician on board to create a plan, nor do we have anybody. On staff who could manage this. And I'm afraid if we hired somebody to do it for us, the ten thousand dollars would be exhausted. Um, I just want to put that out there. Right. I I don't, I don't know what the plan is further than. Authorizing a resolution when we don't have a plan, we don't have a a medical department. Nor do we have somebody who's going to be able to manage this.
Got it. So again, I think this is a piece of, we don't have to try to do everything internally, right? There are organizations that are experts in these things that uh, they can potentially just be able to expand their services into our city. And already be able to execute on programs that they already have established, personnel that they already have trained and equipped. Um, so this to me is more a sense of, the application deadline is May third. Is this something that we want to try to be able to go after? If so, then if council approves it, then trying to look and identify for credible legitimate not uh. Five oh one C three organizations or entities that specialize in this area. And would be willing to try to expand out in this area and potentially have services or programs. That fall within one of these four areas or categories that align with some things that we're already kind of kind of doing. Whether it's uh, the the what's the 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 day that we plant trees once a year or some of these other efforts. Um, I I, to me, it's. How can we make it happen versus the lack of personnel to do it internally? We need to start leaning on and 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 working and collaborating with other entities to to help fill the void. That we don't have and quit missing opportunities.
Uh, well, I I don't know that we miss opportunities, I I think we have issues with. Trying to get all of the grants. Filed, um, I'm I'm a little sensitive over the last one that we processed and you and I will talk about that.
Okay.
Um, but this is a ten thousand dollar grant, and if somebody else is willing to write. A health program, it, none of us here are qualified to do that. Um, sure, but then we need to get into who's gonna manage it, if it's gonna be somebody else. That would be even better, uh, because we don't have the expertise here.
And 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 definitely, I think council, I'm not gonna speak for them, I'll let them speak in a second, I think we we all, you know, from our different different workshops. Definitely understand that, and I, to me, it's more of a sense of, yes, we want to go after it. There's certain things we know have to come to the table, someone to write the proposal, someone to be able to manage the grant. In that their cost in managing it doesn't exhaust the whole grant if we did receive it, right?
Right.
If we receive it, and if all those things are able to be met. And we're able to do all that before May third, then why not submit the grant?
And I think. I I agree, I mean, if you can find partners to do all that, then sure. Um, it's just, we don't have the expertise here to do it, and I want to put it where it belongs with health professionals.
Exactly, so I think in this sense is more or less, do we want to at least attempt to try to submit the grant? Knowing that we have these hindrances, and that if we're not able to remedy those 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 hindrances. Then even if we do have a resolution signed by the mayor on behalf of the council to apply for the grant, we can't apply for it. Because we exhausted every option to be able to submit the grant.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to have that understanding.
Right, yeah, no, definitely, uh, any other questions? All right, there being none, is there a motion on the floor?
Eric Council, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, is it apply or? For the grant, apply for a Healthy Babies Bright Future and Mayor's Innovative Project Grant Program. And authorize you to sign a resolution for such authorization?
And I'll probably just add in there, based on uh, all contingencies are met.
All contingents and based then all contingencies in there.
All right, and if I can, who? Again, who's gonna fill out the application?
But that again, that's one of the contingencies, right?
Okay, all right.
All right, so, um, yeah, contingencies here is, uh, uh. Things that are agreed upon regarding who's gonna write the proposal, uh, submitting of the proposal. Um, who's gonna manage the grant, that that's what I consider as being part of those contingencies. That, you know, we we shouldn't submit the grant if we don't have those things at least identified.
I agree.
Um, it's been properly motioned, do we have a second?
I'll say.
A second.
Seconded by the mayor pro Tim, any questions to the motion?
Um, I'll 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 just say, I I understand, um, uh. I think I understand what both of you all are coming from, and um, I know that. Um, as this has been one of the things we've talked about for a while, as far as. Um, the things we need for the community, but also, you know, the uh, our our staffing.
Yeah.
And and the wear and tear on on staff and how to leverage this, and I think. Um. At least from my perspective, anytime we we consider a grant. Um, before we even bring it up, cause I think that's what Mayor, Mayor Wallace, I think that's uh, that's that's what you you're saying is. Now, I'm bringing it up because I have no intention on trying to tax you all with this, you know, let's see if we can find somebody else. That can meet our expectations and do this, so that our residents get something, that's, uh, so I think if, that we can like have some, um. Maybe, I don't want to say, maybe when we get to that workshop, we have to reschedule. Maybe we, if it's possible to add another that this topic about grants, and maybe we come up with some standards. So that we know if if there is a grant, that there's a a common expectation that is gonna have to. Have these components, you know what I mean? Um, it's gonna have to, you know, entity is gonna have to meet certain expectations, they're gonna have to be able to do this, they're gonna have to have, you know, whatever. So we can just all be on the same page, um, in regards to, um. Meet resident needs. Current staff capacity. You know what I mean? And um, and then also, as best as possible. Um, I know sometimes we get the stuff late, but as best as possible, you know, trying to get something where there's enough time to have. Uh, understanding and comprehension for all persons involved, does that make sense?
And and Mayor Pro Tim, we we do have a grant process and it includes a grant committee and. We we've not really been taking these things through that process, and so that's part of the the confusion here on staff's. Side is that. There was a process in place and and I think it would help to vet some of these things.
Yeah, but you also gotta remember too, some of these things, because we don't necessarily have assets or entities, or it's not someone coming to us. With the grants and writing the proposals and all that stuff, we we need to at least know that. This is something that's backed or this effort is some is backed by council, so then we have something to talk to someone. Be able to get them to put a proposal together that then can come to the commi- uh, to the grants committee to review and say, yep, it's good to go. Right, we have to work it from both sides, because if we only go with. An entity has to provide and bring everything and want to come work with us, we're gonna continue to miss out on grants where. It's ideal for us or it's coming to our inboxes, and we are then trying to leverage contacts or entities or organizations. That we believe would be great partners, and before getting them to start doing work and all that stuff. We we want to at least be able to go down and say, look, council's already blessed off on this, we want to, we want to be able to submit it, deadline is this time. We gotta get it to our grants department, uh, our. We gotta get it to our grants department, uh, our grants committee by this time to review it and bless off on it.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, um, Tommy, we just bring all that, uh, either that workshop or, or another one. We just bring it all and that'd be just a topic that we just kinda learn what's in place, talk about. You know, what we've experienced thus far and maybe see if there needs to be any revisions or whatever. That way we can move what, move forward with something that everyone knows. And um, you know.
I, I agree and I'm anxious to share with council the, the. Problems we had with the grant from last week.
Yeah.
Um, two solid days of trying to figure out how to get an application done. That was supposed to have been given to us a week before completely filled out.
Yeah.
So there, there are issues with. Most of these.
Yeah, so that's one of. I think that, that'd be a good opportunity for us really to just talk about, talk about that, cause usually when we talk about grants, it's, it's in this type of capacity.
I, I would love to be able to get them, I, I do, uh, but there, there had been issues with most of them.
Yeah, and I think so, if we can, if we can iron out the protocols ahead of time, I think that might. You know, might have a general understanding and we can maybe head off, you know, the majority of the concerns or issues.
Sure.
You know, I think that would be, put us in a good place so that moving forwards.
All right, uh, any, any additional questions to the motion?
Mayor Wallace?
Hmm.
Um, Veronica, do that again, um, Assistant City Attorney. Could y'all repeat the motion uh since we will be assisting depending on what the outcome is? Uh, on a potential or possible resolution.
Uh, so the motion was to uh approve applying for the healthy babies bright futures. And Mayor Innovation Project Grant uh Program. Uh, authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution evidencing such authorization. Uh, uh, if the contingencies are met and the contingencies would be uh identifying who would be. Uh, the, the, the operating agency, uh, uh, grant writer. Uh, and uh, in, in that the uh cost to operate it did not exhaust. The grant rece- uh, the grant monies received.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes. You're right, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number seventeen, consideration discussion of possible action on a memorandum of understanding agreement between the City of Manor and the U. University of Texas at Austin. Deja and uh, uh, Councilwoman Weir. I think this is the Black Mamas ATX, um, MOU.
Yes.
Anything y'all wanna, y'all wanna state on this?
Deja, you wanna say anything?
Sure, I think with this one, um, I spoke about it before, just kinda mentioning it in a report about what um. Black Mama's ATX is a program that was created out of this school of social work. Um, with North University of uh Texas here in Austin. And so they received a grant through the Impact Austin that allowed them to be able to. Um, provide services to black women and black teen. Uh, teens who were pregnant throughout their pregnancy terms um in the city of Manor. Um, so they have the MOU that was, they brought it back and so we just wanted to be able to. Um, get approval from council if possible, but also address any concerns at which possibly could be um. Oh wait, Limbeka, so you know, of course, we wanted to, our only aspect that they wanted from us was to help with. Um, identifying or just advertising for um. To get that population to them so that they can be served by um Black Mama's ATX. But then also, um, if we happen to have any space or. Areas where they can hold their businesses, um, meetings and things like that, um, their group meetings. If we had any of that, we would be able to offer that, but it would be at our cost. And so there wouldn't be any money that they would pay us or be able to contribute to us if we. Had a space available. So I think that could be one of the concerns because um. If we have the bandwidth for that, but then also the bandwidth to be able to, or the ability. Um, to be able to provide people like specifically names and things like that. Or, and help with that data to transfer that back and forth versus just kinda having something generic and open. To round up people to let them know, not round them up, but to let people know in a, uh, in a good sense. Um, to know that this is available in our city.
All I think I wanna add is to let you know that it is a forty thousand dollar grant. And the clock started on that on December one of twenty twenty. That we've been working with them on this, uh, all the services they would provide to our um young, pregnant. And um, post uh pregnancy uh females would be free. Um, so this is a great opportunity for our citizens, um. The project goal is to improve the reproductive health services to the black women. In the childbearing period here in Manor, Texas with a twelve month period and it could possibly be extended. So, and as they just said, there, there, the thing that we would be doing is helping to message the program. And refer people to the program as needed and then seeing if we could be helpful in um. Assisting them identifying a space.
All right, and you know. Go ahead, Tom.
I was just gonna ask, Councilman, we're, when, when you say identifying a space, are you talking about for uh personal visits? Or group types of things or, we don't know yet, maybe?
It could be a little bit a combination of both, don't you think?
Okay. Uh, just so I know what to look for.
Deja, did you understand it to be different?
Um, I think it could be a combination of both, but, but, but mainly a group, cause they provide group um. Discussions and things like that.
Okay. I, the reason I'm asking is, um, perhaps uh the council chambers would be large enough, I, I don't know. Uh, how many people to anticipate, but there are four nights a week that the building is not used.
Oh, that's great, thank you, thank you.
Well, I think this is a, 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 another example and I think probably to the less concern of the previous. Previous grant on that, that Tom is talking about where this is where we partnered with Black Mama's ATX. They submitted a grant, they wrote the proposal, they submitted it through uh Amplify Austin. Uh, and was awarded uh the grant to extend their services here within Manor. And you know, kinda back to what Mayor Pro Tim Harvey was talking about is having that conversation of. What are the different ways grants can potentially occur? Uh, which, which ones are probably more ideal uh for everybody? And then what are those ones that they're unicorns and we may have to go through the extra rigmarole uh to, to, to make it happen? But uh, you know, this, this grant opportunity was specifically focused on helping. Uh, uh, black mothers, uh, uh, was it prenatal to uh post? Um, for about a year or two, um, especially since there's no, uh, was it gynecologist?
Right.
Uh, in, in, in the area to bring that service directly here uh within the city of Manor. Uh, there's potentiality, as I said, to be able to expand um the, the, uh, the, uh, renewal capacity of it. Um, but definitely something that they, they uh approached to us that they wanted to do in this area. I believe uh, uh, Nikia Wilson is, is from or has been around in the Manor area. So uh, someone else that is from this area that wants to definitely bring services into this area. Um, but with that, is there a motion on the floor? Or, uh, yeah, is there a motion on the floor? And then we'll get to questions if there are any questions.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Again, Veronica, the Assistant City Attorney, uh, with regard to um any motion made on the floor. Uh, please make it similar to what was provided, not necessarily with contingencies, but was. Uh, provided since there's no motion on there uh in, with the last agenda item. And also um pending uh legal review of the MOU for any edits, um, since it is an agreement that legal has not looked at yet.
Okay, um, so I'm assuming then, uh, is there a motion on the floor? To approve the memorandum of understanding agreement between the City of Manor and the University of Texas at Austin. Uh, contingent upon no issues or revisions required by legal. And what, I, I don't think there's any other requirements in, in the MOU.
A resol- and a resolution for the mayor to.
Okay, uh, and, and a resolution, uh, in authorizing a resolution. Uh, uh, for the mayor to sign a resolution of the same. Is, is, is there a motion out there? There is, it's a awesome motion.
Um, awesome motion.
All right, it's been motioned, do I have a second?
My second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Um, Tom, does you have any additional questions on this one?
No, not at all. Uh, this one's an easier one.
Okay, got it. Uh, any other questions out there?
Just some thoughts, um, Ms. Wilson, um, they do some work with, with teen parents. And they had a lot of classes that they um had for um, for all families, uh, teen, all teen parents. Were held um at, at the MEA campus. And so um, I would just, you know, if, if you, as you're looking for a space. Um, or, or those kinds of things, there might be, that could be a consideration. Especially if it's a teen mom, they may have their child at the, at the child center over there. Um, in addition to uh the city space that Tom mentioned earlier. Um, and then um, I know some other space that's available. Now, uh, could be petitioned to um, the district about that's unused.
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim, what space was that?
At Manor Excel Academy, that's what they typically have, that's what Ms. Wilson uh used to work at. And um, and then when she moved on to a different job, she would volunteer and run programs over there with teen moms. Um, and so um, and uh, so, so she, that's the work that uh, I think. Uh, Mayor, I thought I was talking about her involvement in community. She ran a lot of programs in, in, in Manor over there, so, so that's a spot that of consideration. And then I can tell you all, I'll find about um another space.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Uh, no problem.
Any additional questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, City Council will now convene into executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one Texas government code. In accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one Texas government code. And section one point zero five six is disciplinary rules of professional conduct to consult with legal. Council discuss City of Manor Code of ordinances regarding Manor RV Park LLC versus City of Manor at all. All right, see y'all in the breakout.
Mike, are you there?
I hope so.
Yes, I am.
Okay. We need to be invited, I think.
Yeah, I have to create the room.
Okay.
Mike, when you.
Who's going?
Is in there?
Mike, it's all council.
Okay.
And then, yeah, um, Tom, Frank.
And attorney.
And me.
Scott.
And Frank, if he wants to.
And uh, Mr.
I've been waiting all night.
Pardon me?
Brad and, Brad and Veronica, please, those are the attorneys.
I, I, you know, I forgot about Brad, sorry about that.
They always, they don't have, Jean, Jean's on council.
Yes.
I don't know Dennis Curlin.
No.
That was another.
Sonia Wallace?
Yeah.
Okay, is Lydia in on this one?
No.
No.
Okay.
Anne?
Yeah, I have Anne.
Mike, it's just on. I'm not sure who Dennis is.
Uh, Dennis Curlin, yeah.
No, I don't know who that is, I'm sorry.
There, it's just you, me and Dennis.
I know, I'm not sure, Dennis, are you there? Okay, I'm not sure who, who they're waiting for to speak or they're just on. But that's it, thank you.
You got it.
I'm on.
Oh, yeah, he's on.
Okay.
Uh, city council will now reconvene in an open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five, five, one Texas government code. And take action, if any, on items discussed during closed executive session. There is no decisions to be made. This meeting is adjourned at ten fifty seven PM.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Hi.
Hi.
Night, y'all.
Night.